Thank you. It is the time and date appointed, and before I convene the meeting of the Pastoral City Council, I would like to say, in compliance with the state and county shelter home orders, and as allowed by the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. City Council? City Council, can you hear me? City Council meetings will be held by teleconference only until further notice. Rather than attending in person, residents should call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone will be open just prior to the start of a closed session meeting, which it was. We'll talk about that a little later. You can submit written public comments via the email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. That being said, I will now call the meeting of the Pastoral City Council for Tuesday, June the 2nd to order. And we will observe our Pledge of Allegiance as we have the last three meetings. I will ask Councilwoman Garcia to lead us in the pledge. The rest of us will mute our microphones and follow along so we don't overlap each other. So Councilwoman Garcia, if you would lead us, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For invocation tonight, we welcome Pastor Steve Colonia. Steve, are you on the line?
Sorry, hang on. I should be going now.
Pastor Colonia, are you with us?
Amen. The invocation tonight is a prayer that I learned in my childhood. Many of you probably are familiar with it. I invite you to pray with me if you'd like. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Thus stay our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate that. At this time, I'll ask for all of us, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond? Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Councilmember Hammond, are you here?
I see his presence online, but I don't, he is muted.
And Mayor Martin?
I'm president. Records show that all council members are present. Mr. Hammond, I'm sure will unmute his line soon. Could we please take a moment to recognize staff and others that might be present electronically who work for the city? I'll turn that back to the city manager's office to conduct that.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I believe Warren Frase, Community Development Director, will go first.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director, and then on the line, David Athie, City Engineer.
Dick McKinley, Public Works Director, and on the line, Deidre Esperanza, Capital Projects Engineer.
Julie Dolan, Community Services Director, and joining us is Frida Berman, Maintenance Superintendent.
Ty Lewis, Police Chief.
Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief.
Ryan Cornell, Director of Administrative Services. On the line with us is Shannon Fouts, HR Manager, and Katherine Piatti, Finance Manager.
Sarah Johnson-Rios, Assistant City Manager. And we're also joined by Dave McHugh, IT Manager, Melissa Martin, Deputy City Clerk, and Shawna Howenstein, Community Engagement Coordinator.
Kimberly, that's your cue. So Kimberly must also be muted. So Kimberly Hood, Andrum City Attorney, is also with us tonight, and this is Tom Fruchy, City Manager.
Thanks very much. Prior to this open public meeting of the Pastoral City Council, we had an announced closed session meeting of the Pastoral City Council just prior to this. If we have our city attorney online, I will ask her to report if there is any reportable action.
So I will do that for her, Your Honor. This is Tom Fruchy, City Manager. And as you say, we did have one topic in closed session. That was Labor Negotiations Conference. And that was with the city's negotiators, Thomas Fruchy and Ryan Cornell. And the employee organizations who were discussed included the Passerobles Professional Firefighters, the Passerobles Police Association, the Service Employees International Union, and unrepresented management, including, among others, the city manager, the assistant city manager, and department heads. And that conference took place with the city council, but there was no reportable action taken.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. Moving ahead to presentations, I want to add something. Tonight, we had some rallies in downtown today, very public. And our police chief, Ty Lewis, was downtown all day today, making sure that everyone was safe. Chief Lewis is with us tonight, and I would ask for an update on that situation, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, we did have an impromptu, well, what turned out to be of short notice regarding planned protests today regarding, I think, kind of what's consistently been going on throughout the country and San Luis Obispo most recently with regarding Mr. Floyd and the use of force with Minneapolis Police Department. So today are, I apologize, still out of breath a little bit. I walked six and a half miles on my Fitbit. I kind of gaged it out today. But it was, we had short notice that there would be some protesters today at City Park beginning at 11 o'clock. Our community was great. They quickly notified the police department and forwarded information that was traveling around on social media, Facebook and Instagram and other sources. Immediately, we contacted the San Luis Obispo County Sheriff's Department. I spoke with Sheriff Parkinson, as well as the other area police chiefs. And we quickly put together a plan to ensure the safety of the protesters, as well as our community, you know, keeping in mind everybody's, you know, First Amendment rights to speak. So as predicted, there was a group that quickly formed in City Park right around 11 o'clock. I would estimate that at its peak, there were somewhere around 120 folks that were part of that group. And they started marching from City Park initially. Ultimately, they headed mostly south on Spring Street, rounded the corner at 6th, and marched their way back up Pine Street, back to City Park in a very mostly peaceful demonstration, expressing mostly their frustration with law enforcement throughout the country. I have to take a moment to just really speak to the character of our community. It was outstanding to see the public respond in such a positive manner. Not only the protesters that did their best, even though there was a highly emotionally charged situation, to be able to speak their minds, vent their frustration, all the way to our community members that were certainly worried. We had various reports that the protests might turn violent, that people from out of the area could be bussed in into the community to start some nefarious actions. But that never happened. The group remained calm. They marched with dignity and peacefully. It all wrapped up right around, I would say, 5 o'clock down near City Park at 12 and Pine Street. I began to get concerned that the flavor of the protests were slowly changing. People were tired. It was hot. It was, they'd been at it all day long. I think that there were some people that had joined from outside the area that maybe didn't necessarily live in the North County or even Passerobles. I also had received that there, information that there might be some counter protesters forming. And so I really became concerned over community safety. And I was able to meet with some of the leaders of the group that appeared to be some of the more vocal. I don't know if they were actually leading the group or not. But they were very receptive to talking with me, explaining the situation. And we all came together and said a prayer, talked about some of the issues at hand, kind of explained, you know, how we do things in Passerobles might not necessarily be what's going on in other areas of the country, and reiterated our commitment to building trust within the community, plus keeping everybody safe. Ultimately, after the prayer and a few well-chosen words by some community leaders within the group, the group was willing to disperse without any type of use of force, which was, like I said, just kind of really spoke to the soul of our community, the fabric of our community, and the group has since dispersed. I have to thank the San Luis Obispo County Sheriff, Ian Parkinson, as well as San Luis Obispo Chief Cantrell, Jody Cox from Morro Bay, Beau Pryor in Arroyo Grande, everybody, Chief Miller in Pismo Beach. Everybody sent officers up here to help us, and it ended peacefully. And I think I promised the group that I would really reiterate to the council tonight during this briefing session, you know, the importance of discussing these types of, you know, certainly tragic, you know, circumstances which Mr. Floyd died, and make sure that that was brought to the city council's attention. And I want to really thank the community for stepping up. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thanks for that report, Chief, and great job. I was down there for the first part of the activity, and that was some of the people. You and your folks were very respectful and very clear with folks. And I think that, I sense that they respected you back for that, and I appreciate that. Just a note for people listening in, because the council is separated physically. In order to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak, we've been doing questions in alphabetical order, switching the person who starts it each week. So this is obviously a presentation. It's not an action item. But if there are council questions, we'll start with Councilman Hammond. I'm not hearing from Councilman Hammond. I might want to check and see if he's still muted. Let's move on to Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question is, that was a lot of police presence from outside of our community as well. I know that we have mutual aid agreements. We have a budget item coming up later. So I'm wondering, how are we doing in how many people we're sending elsewhere and how many are coming in? Are we going to be straining our budget in that regard if these things continue?
Mr. Strong, I appreciate the question, and I really, at this time, don't know how to best answer that other than to say, you know, depending on the duration and the intensity of these events, we're having problems from all the way here, obviously, down to Santa Maria, just in our local area. And of course, you know, we received a lot of aid and support today, and we would reciprocate should our neighbors, you know, experience challenges that they aren't able to tackle on their own. That's probably one of the strengths of San Luis Obispo County in particular, is that we're made up of many small communities that all value the quality of life that we have here in the Central Coast and San Luis Obispo. And we're all dedicated to keeping our communities safe. So with regard to budget, we certainly have some expenditures that weren't accounted for because of these, and we'll be working with Mr. Fruchy to, you know, make sure that all of those are communicated to council. And of course, Mr. Cornell, as well as our Administrative Services Director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
No, sir. No questions. Just great job.
Councilman Gregory?
Ty, I just wanted to say thank you again for a great command of the situation today. And that, right at the very end, that was very well done to get that group finally broken up and going home. So thank you for all your effort.
You're welcome, Mr. Gregory. And I got to let the council know as well that Mr. Gregory was in the heart of that, standing right next to me, talking with the group. And he should be recognized for his assistance. It was a great job.
So we still are not hearing from Mr. Hammond. If he comes online a little bit later, we'd certainly be able to make his comments. I was asked, as the group met in front of the police station, to make some comments. And one of the things that I told him that I was willing to do was to convene a mayor's panel on issues regarding racism in the city of Passerobles. So I intend on doing that in the days to come, to initiate a community conversation on these issues. I'm also going to press my fellow mayors across the county to do a similar thing. And we need to take our input from our communities and push it upstairs to the state and federal level so that we can, we can address the concerns that are being raised by the people who are protesting in our streets. So we are going to take that action, and we'll be doing three different phases. One, we'll be doing a lot of listening. We'll be doing a lot of communicating about what we've heard. And then as we come up with policies that the council will consider, we will also share those with other elected officials and also advise our state and federal officials of our actions so that they know what the people on the street in Passerobles are saying about this issue. And again, our thanks to the police department. Thank you, Councilman Gregory, for being down there. Also, I think seeing us present sends a message to folks that we are concerned and we are involved, and we are hearing what they're saying. So again, thank you all for your efforts.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Hammond. Did you have a question or a comment?
Well, yeah, and I was hearing about every eighth word that Ty was saying. I just want to say again that, great job, Ty. Again, professionally done, as usual. And what I was going to recommend is that our council write a letter to all the other agencies and law enforcement groups that helped us today. I mean, we're ready to be for their benefit too, if needed. But in this case, I think a thank you letter from our mayor with council behind it would certainly be in order.
Thank you. That's a great idea. We'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom Fruchy. If I could just add one comment?
Yes, please.
I think in addition to the amazing leadership, tremendous leadership that the police chief showed and the comments and commitment by the mayor, I think, as Ty indicated, our community really stepped up today. There was, however, one segment of our community that really felt that they might need to get involved in order to prevent some of the violence and problems we've seen in other communities. And I would just ask them to respect our police department. The police department was always in control of the situation. And I really appreciate the commitment to our community, those people who want to defend this show. But it really is better to leave it in the hands of the professionals to make sure that the persons and property in our community are adequately protected. So I would ask them not to engage in any efforts to let the police department do its job.
I don't know. Did everybody else know that we had the National Guard out at the airport landing at the same time this is all happening today? It was just ironic.
There were nine flights, there were nine flights of C-130s that came in, and they were bringing in National Guard people, not, as Calco's News reported, to deal with the 700 angry demonstrators in downtown. And it never was 700. But they're here to go to Camp Roberts for training. So it's part of their annual training. It just happened to be coincidentally in the same day.
Exactly.
Thank you for bringing that up, John. I got a, I got a contact about that too, and checked it out and got back to them. But it's good to make sure that everybody has straight information on this stuff. And again, I can say, having been down in the park, I believe the chief's estimates of the crowd size are accurate, and his observations about how the community stepped up are also accurate. So we appreciate that.
So Chief Lewis, is there any projection of the future you want to share with us that we need to be aware of? Was this a one-time event? Do you expect additional activities in the near future? Or is there any way to know at this point?
Well, I know that the area chiefs are monitoring the situation. And I believe that there might be some protests that are scheduled for San Luis Obispo City later in the week. We'll be constantly monitoring to see if our community is impacted by any of those protests. And we'll keep everybody up to date. As of right now, I don't have any information that would indicate that there are more planned. But certainly, we'll be prepared.
So, Mr. Mayor, as part of our preparations, we were prepared to enact a curfew tonight if needed. That is not needed, and thanks to our community and Chief Lewis for it not being necessary. But I want people to know that we will do what it takes to protect our community if necessary.
All falling under the heading of State Strong, Passerobles. Once again, thank you all. Is there anything else on this subject? Okay, we're going to move on. Presentations. Let's have a COVID-19 update. Our Assistant City Manager and our Emergency Services Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, members of the council, Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief. San Luis Obispo County COVID-19 cases continue to rise. In total, there are 278 cases. The graph before you was created prior to the county's update this afternoon. In the last 24 hours, the county has had seven new cases. Yesterday was the single largest increase in a month. Cases in the Passerobles region have reached 119. As of today, there are 13 active cases within the city limits of Passerobles. These cases are distributed throughout the city in nine different locations. The number of cases in California is now on pace to double every 28 days. Currently, there is over 110,000 confirmed cases. And in the last 24 hours, these numbers increased by 3,700 cases. Over 4,200 total deaths have occurred with an increase of 57 in the last 24 hours. And 56 of the 58 counties continue to report new cases. Before you, right now, is a slide for the workforce population over the age of 55. Out of over 130 jobs in San Luis Obispo County, over 50,000 jobs are held by individuals in the high-risk age population. That is over 38% of the job population in San Luis Obispo County. The figure before you, you can see a breakdown of the population by region that falls within the 55 and over age group. As we discuss our vulnerable workforce population, it's important that members of our community help in protecting them by wearing cloth face coverings while in public. We now know from recent studies that a significant portion of individuals with the coronavirus lacks symptoms and can transmit the virus to others before showing symptoms. This means that the virus can spread between people interacting in close proximity. For example, when you're speaking, coughing, or sneezing, even if those people are not exempting symptoms, they are still contagious. In light of this information, the CDC recommends wearing cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures cannot be maintained. Examples of this would be in grocery stores, pharmacies, restaurants, and large retail centers. The state is currently in Phase 2 of the roadmap to reopening. The governor has indicated the guidelines for Stage 3 reopening will be coming soon. We encourage businesses that open in Stage 2 to ensure they have completed the self-certification process through San Luis Obispo County. This information can be found at readyslow.org. We currently have a testing site located out at the Veteran Center on Scrot Street, but it will be closing next Monday, June 8. We encourage all residents who have not been tested to please register online to obtain your COVID-19 test prior to them shutting it down. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Councilman Hammond?
None, thank you.
Councilman Strong?
Yes, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I couldn't get in there. No, I have no questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
So just to be clear, on the last testing date, so they still will be testing on Monday? Or Friday will be the last testing?
I believe Friday will be the last day for testing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, Chief, just a quick question. So where do we refer people that still want to get tested after this Friday?
So there are a number of testing sites throughout the county. This one is being moved, and I'll have to confirm the location. But we would be happy, through our PIOs, to put a press release out to the community and let them know what those new locations are. Additionally, there's still the testing sites before you on your screen, the MedPost, Urgent Care, OnFirst, and Vine here in Passerobles, another one in Timbleton and Atascadero. But we will get that information out to the community of the new site locations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I was tested on Monday, and the staff there said that they're being moved to the Vets Hall in San Luis Obispo.
Very good. Mr. Stornetta, I continue to get questions from the public about the fact that Passerobles has more positive tests than anybody else in the county. Have you heard any rationale behind that?
We have not heard any rationale behind that. Dr. Borenstein, the County Public Health Director, they haven't been putting out the exact details on that information. So we're still working on finding out if there's some type of link between that and the residents of the North County.
Okay, and I would encourage folks listening in, if they haven't heard this already, they can go to readyslow.org. You're going to find all the information about this county's experience with COVID, including a breakdown by community of infection rates. The good news is, the overwhelming majority of people who have tested positive are now recovered or recovering. We've only experienced one death, and we only have a couple of people in the hospital. So as long as we keep that infection low and flattened, we're going to be able to continue opening our economy. So thank you for that report. That is a presentation. There is no need for action. We're going to move on to general public comments. And before I do that, I want to remind the public, if they wish to comment on any item on the agenda tonight, the phone number to call is 805-865-7276. When you call in, you'll be placed on hold until it's time for you to speak. If you wish to speak on multiple items, it's really best to call multiple times because you don't have to hang on the phone that way. And we'll be able to call on you, and you'll be able to get your three minutes as you please. So we move on to general public comments. This is an opportunity we set aside for people to make brief comments or ask brief questions about issues that the city of Passerobles has jurisdiction over. We do our best to answer those questions before we move on. We would ask, please, if you call that phone number, once again, 805-865-7276. And if you please begin by stating your name and address. Each person is limited to three minutes. And we will open phone lines and ask for public comment. In my queue, I see we have Mr. Carr. Are you with us, sir?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Yeah, this is Jeff Carr, Passerobles. I'm commenting today on, I guess, some events regarding the last meeting where we, the First Amendment to the 2013 franchise agreement with Passerobles Waste and Recycling was not part of the agenda package. And so, you know, I was inquiring about that after the meeting. And I had heard through those conversations or emails that the council was fully briefed on the amendment prior to the meeting, individually briefed. And to me, it looked like, well, you guys just passed something without even reading it or seeing it or looking at it. But I'm not exactly sure what happened there, or how you saw the document, or how you were briefed. But it doesn't sound like a policy that is really in the best interest of the public here to have our councils pre-briefed like this. You know, it can be benign, I understand. And I'm not saying anything really happened, but the potential for something to happen in my mind is pretty high. I mean, we don't know what's going on in these briefings. And, you know, part of the problem with a lot of things is, you know, perception from the public is important. And perception is important, maintaining that trust in the council to make sure that they're working everything in front of the public as much as they can. And so when I hear that they're working in these private, individual, individual private briefings, it does concern me. And as respective of specific item, I'm still not sure how they saw the document. Because if it wasn't in the agreement, if it wasn't in the agenda package, did they get it through some other avenue? Did somebody else send them an email with the amendment in it? Or maybe they just never saw it, and it was part of just a briefing. Somebody just went through it with them. And because part of that problem, I think, with that kind of situation is that you can get documents that are different. I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, you guys just provided a perfect example of that. Because a few days after this meeting, I requested a copy of the amendment, and I because a few days after this meeting, I requested a copy of the amendment, and I did receive one from the city. Now, I've looked at the same document that was part of the agenda packet for tonight, and they are different. There is one section in there that has different phrasing. So somewhere between the document that I got on May 22 and tonight's document, there was a change, or there was a mix-up and revision. But that's the kind of thing that is going to happen when you're doing private briefing, you're not getting documents from the city, like everybody else. And that's always been my assumption, that that's the way you guys do things, but maybe that was a bad assumption. But anyway, there's lots of disadvantages in my mind about you getting, having these pre-briefings. I mean, I've seen lots of cities do it, you know, not pre-briefings, but they have ways to deal with interactions with the staff before a meeting. And most of the time, you know, a good council member will usually tell you, you know, hey, I asked these questions of staff, and they'll sometimes go through them, or they'll go through the city manager.
Yes, sir.
And say, well, the manager will do it.
That is three minutes. Would you like to summarize, sir?
Okay, well, again, I'm saying that this was not a good policy for the city, and I think you need to stop this again. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, and we'll try to get some feedback for you on that before general public comment is finished. Thank you very much. Before I continue, this is an item that I have to recuse myself on as far as the agreement goes, but since it's a process question, can I continue to be in the meeting on this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, for the process piece, you can. Once we get to the actual item on the consent agenda, you will need to announce your recusal.
Right, very good. So the process question, I can stay in my seat for it. Very good. We have one other person for general public comment, Gina Fitzpatrick, the CEO of our Chamber of Commerce. Gina, are you with us?
Hello? Hi, am I here?
You are on, ma'am.
Oh, fantastic. This is Gina Fitzpatrick, the Passerobles Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, and I'm calling in tonight regarding a parklet. Do you want me to wait until that item comes back up on the agenda?
Yes, we have parklets on the agenda tonight, and we'll have a separate public comment for that.
Perfect, okay.
Very good. We will talk to you then. I see no one else in the queue. I'm going to close general public comment and turn it back to staff for comments and answers to the questions that Mr. Carr posed regarding the agenda packet exclusion, pre-briefing for council members, and he says there's a difference between the two versions of the agreement. And of course, I'm not first in that because I'm not part of this issue. So if the city manager and city attorney could reply to those, that would be much appreciated.
Be happy to, Your Honor, and Mr. Carr raises several matters, and so this may take a minute or two to answer his question fully. So he's absolutely correct. On complex issues, we do take opportunities to brief the community's elected representatives on the issues on an ongoing basis prior to them coming to council. And there is absolutely strong reasons for that, in that we want to make sure that by the time the item gets to council, it's ready for council review and decision-making. In addition, just in case there's any doubt, that procedure is fully consistent with the Brown Act, because we are not meeting with the council outside of a public meeting, but I, the staff or I, brief individual council members. We answer their questions, and we take any individual direction they'd like to give us. We don't share that with other council members, so there's no collusion, there's no serial meeting, but it's an opportunity for us to ensure that we've thought of everything, that we need to make sure that when we bring the item to council, it's complete and addresses all your concerns and issues. We don't want to bring something to council, you ask questions, we say, oh, sorry, we have to go back and do more work to answer that question. So then, Mr. Carr does rightly point out that unfortunately, through strictly production error, the actual text of the amendment to the franchise agreement was not included in the packet that went to you on the 19th. Now, you had already, in our briefings with you, had a chance for us to brief you on what amendments we were proposing and for you to ask questions. So you absolutely were familiar with the general concepts, but certainly not with the specific wording. And since it was an oversight but correctable, as Mr. Carr indicates, we're bringing that agreement back to you tonight for you to reaffirm your direction to me to execute the agreement. That gives you the full opportunity to say if you, for what now that you see it in every single word, you don't agree with it, you can either amend it at the meeting tonight or you can pull the item and give me direction, go back and renegotiate. As to Mr. Carr's final comment, there were a few strictly editorial, non-substantive changes to the agreement from the version that we sent to Mr. Carr, and that's in reviewing the agenda packet to bring it to council tonight. We saw some things that we just wanted to clear up. Now, that's not changing the substance, but what it is saying is this agreement goes on for another seven years. It's very important that we word it very carefully so that if issues arise over the next seven years, the agreement adequately covers them, and we preclude any difficulties. Not that the draft originally went to council was sloppily written, but in looking over again, we realized we could clean it up and make it even more clear. So the agreement that is in your agenda packets as Item 11 in your consent calendar tonight is, to all intents and purposes, the same that you saw in the individual briefings and the same that should have been in your packets on the 19th. And as you know, we frequently bring agreements to you, and as the second part of the recommendation, we ask for your authorization to make minor, non-substantive changes, fully consistent with the council's direction, just in case something comes up. So when we're reading the agreement before we sign it, and we have the program manager initial, we have the city attorney approve as the form, the program manager's approved as the concept, and then I sign, and the entity we're contracting with goes through the same kind of a process. So frequently, with that six pairs of eyes, some very minor improvement in wording can be realized that helps preclude problems in the future. And so I think, I appreciate Mr. Carr's concerns. I think we do run those kinds of protections in our system, make sure that everything's done legally, appropriately, and with the best possible result.
Thank you. I think if I understood his comments, you know, one of his concerns was the fact that he wanted to make sure that even if the council was properly briefed, that the public was very clear on what was happening also. So I think it's really important that we make the effort to do that. I see from my queue here, we actually have two people who want to make public comment. Actually, that's been closed, but I think in deference to the uncertainty of the technology at times, with the council's permission, I'd like to reopen general public comment and get these people in. So I have one name, Carol McDonald. Carol, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. It is your turn to speak, ma'am. Welcome.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members. I'm calling for the general comment section because we are discussing outdoor dining opportunities and outdoor experiences for Passerobles later in the agenda, but I'd like to see if there's any possible way that in the next council meeting, we could get road closures for downtown Paso considered. There's a survey taken, and I know that there's a lot of people that are in favor of road closures along with parklets, and for a couple of reasons, I think that it would be fair to actually have an honest discussion about it. As many people, in my opinion...
That is, excuse me, that is on the agenda on a later issue, so this would not be a general public comment. Could I get you to call back at that time?
No, I'm talking about the road closures, not the parklets. I'd like to see if we could get that on the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Because as many people... Okay, as many people that are against the road closures, I think there's just as many people that are for them, and I just think that it is worth an honest conversation, a non-biased conversation. I know one of the main obstacles to road closures is public parking, and I know we've gone through so much in the past, and I sympathize with it, but there's some creative ways to address that situation, and I know that there have been emails of private companies that have offered their parking spaces. One official email today or yesterday, and then there's a couple of other that haven't sent their emails into you, but we have at least 50 to 80 possible parking spaces and more, once we hear from a lot of other people. They are downtown, they're in the downtown core, that wouldn't mean that people would have to walk far to go there. There will be drop-off places if we come up with a concise plan, and I just think it is an opportunity for people that might not be able to afford the parklets, that might not have the access to the parklets, would be another opportunity for downtown restaurants to have additional seating. Without all the tourism that's happening this summer due to the cancellation of concerts and the fair, we could create a kind of a festive atmosphere downtown, even if it's just for weekend nights. So I would just ask that it could get on the next agenda for at least a conversation and take a look at things from both sides and see what solutions can come up to address the people that aren't in favor of that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Your three minutes are up. We appreciate your patience, and thank you for setting me straight. I misunderstood what you were saying. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I see no one else in the queue, so for the second time, I'm going to close general public comments. We are going to move on with our agenda. I will ask the city manager if we have any agenda items to be deferred this evening.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, we do not. I would like to add, however, that we know that YouTube has been a little spotty tonight on carrying the council meeting. Part of the problem with relying on the internet and other providers and people, other companies who own the fiber and the links and the microwave and the software is that we can't always guarantee. So I do understand that YouTube is now up and running, and I apologize that for the first few minutes of the meeting, it was not fully up and running.
I understand we are up and running now, though.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Very good. So no items to be deferred. We move on now to our consent calendar. Consent calendar is considered a list of items that are routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if anyone on the council or anyone in the public wishes to ask a brief question before we make a decision on these items, or if anyone on the council or anyone in the community wishes to have an item pulled, we can have that pulled for a full staff report in consideration. It is our usual practice to put that items been pulled at the end of the agenda. And that remind folks online that if you're not speaking, please temporarily mute your microphones because it gets pretty noisy pretty quickly. So having said all that, first with the council, do we have any council members that would like to ask a question or pull an item, starting with Councilman Hammond?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to get a report on Item 7 from staff.
Okay, so do you want to pull that for full consideration, John?
Well, not so much reconsideration, but I'd like to at least get a report. It's been a long time since we've heard anything about the solar agreement and what's going on. So just a quick report, maybe from Mr. McKinley.
We will get that. Mr. McKinley, you online? Can you give us a quick update on the solar project?
I am. So we are, we've been working diligently with the FAA to get that to move forward. The FAA, as you all know, have a lot of rules and a lot of stipulations related to our grant agreements and assurances, and so they sent us a letter that said, if you do all these things, then we'll be able to give you permission. And so this MOU with Onyx Renewables, that's the company that will build and operate this solar array, this MOU with Onyx implements those specific conditions that the FAA requires us to do.
Thank you. Is that good for you, John?
Yeah, that's just an update of what status is with FAA. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong, any questions or any withdrawals from the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yes, I have a correction for the minutes. Number two for the minutes, and in the minutes on Item 17, and the motion, I believe, is stated incorrectly. So it was motioned by Councilmember Strong, is seconded by Councilmember Hammond, and passed unanimously to direct staff to proceed with the city parking dining program and determine how to replicate it in parks throughout the city. We would have no consideration of any street closures, those were Mr. Strong's words, and then to bring back the parklets back to the city council for this meeting currently.
Very good. Mr. Strong, is that your recollection of your motion?
Yes, it is, actually.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, you concur?
And I concur as well.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Gregory?
No, that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a request from Mr. Borst in the community. John Borst, he would like to have Item Number 11 pulled from consent, so that we will take that and put it at the end of the agenda. I believe we've covered the rest of the bases, and I would entertain a motion to pass the balance of the consent calendar.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Do we have to have a public comment first?
I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I have an open for public comment. I didn't see anybody in the queue here for public comment on the... Do we have a... Excuse me, I'm scrolling down, scrolling down.
Mayor Martin, we have two public comments on Item Number 11 that's been deferred. Other than that, nothing on consent.
So is it the council's desire to move this to the end of the agenda, as is our practice, or do you want to take this up now?
I would say let's go now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, in that case, I would like a motion. First of all, I see no public comment on the balance of the consent calendar, so I think...
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for items, items number two through 10 and 12 through 13.
Second, Councilman Gregory?
I have a motion from Councilman Hammond, seconded by Councilman Gregory, to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to the minutes and pulling Item Number 11 for separate consideration. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
And Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now we go to Item Number 11, and I am recusing myself from participating in this item due to a potential conflict of interest, since Passerobles Waste and Removal has purchased advertising time from my internet radio station and therefore is a source of income to me. I ask that Vice Mayor Gregory take over for this item. While I would typically leave the room for this virtual meeting, I've been advised by the city attorney to leave the room by turning off my microphone, camera, and speakers. Mr. Fucci will notify me when the item is done, and I can rejoin the meeting. I pass the gavel to Mr. Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. So is there two people on hold for this? Melissa?
Yes, there are two people. The first caller, would you like me to bring them online, or do you want to hear anything about the item first?
No, you can bring them online.
Okay, first caller is...
Mr. Mayor, can't we have a staff report?
Sure. Go ahead, let's have a staff report.
Tom, do you want that to come from me or the city attorney, or what would you like?
Dick, if you'd go ahead and give the overall report, and then if the city attorney needs to weigh in, I'm sure she will be happy to do so.
Certainly. In your council direction to staff on your March 17 meeting, you asked us to proceed with the Proposition 218 process for Package B of the rates, and you provided a direction to staff to work with Passerobles Waste and Recycle, the franchise provider, and some items to be, an amendment to the franchise agreement. And so we did that and brought those items back as part of the resolution on your May 19 meeting. And Exhibit A to the resolution were the rates, and Exhibit B to the resolution was the franchise agreement that included several things like being clear on the term of the agreement, being clear that in, by the end of the calendar year 2015, that the council would provide direction to staff of whether or not and how you would want to do an RRP process or something to... or something to select a different franchise provider, or whether you do another extension or some other something at that point. It recognizes the adding street sweeping and the garbage collection service that the franchise holder has been providing to the city for a while now. It has language that makes sure that the franchise provider continues to stay up on new regulations, new rules, new policies. For example, Starform Regulations or Senate Bill 1383, Organics Waste Regulations and things like that. And so it has a number of those kinds of clauses in it. Nothing major in its own way, other than that. So those items that were, there were essentially three items that were inadvertently left out of the packet. The Exhibit B with the franchise, the proposed amendment to the franchise agreement. And then as part of that proposed amendment were the exhibits to the franchise agreement itself for the street sweeping program. We'd be happy to answer any questions you want to have.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, Mr. McKinley just innocently misspoke. And when he said 2015, he meant 2025. And what that means is, since the agreement goes through 2027, the council would not want to wait until any time after 2025 to direct staff to start the RFP process. You could certainly do that earlier, but we wouldn't want to do, start it later because it might not then have a result until after the existing agreement had expired.
Yeah, 2025. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. So sorry about that, Fred. I'll go ahead and go through questions. So Councilman Hammond, any questions on this item?
No, Mr. Protem, no, I do not have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strong, do you have any?
No, not at this point. No. I just wanted to make sure that the public and everybody understood what we were going to be considering.
Yep. Appreciate the reminder. Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, can we have Mr. Borst join us?
Yes, Mr. Borst is coming on right now.
Hi, Mr. Borst.
I didn't know where would be best to address my comments on today's agenda item. But here, I have prepared a letter and I've sent it to the city clerk and I'll just read it. It will take about two minutes or so. Honorable Passerobles City Council Members, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have asked for further discussion at tonight's meeting of item number 14, public housing, public hearing, including the Passerobles 218 process for solid waste collection rate, as noted in the council's consent calendar. Tonight, I ask the city council members to take action to both offer and institute a discount assistant solid waste program for qualifying seniors and low-income citizens residing in our city. The new trash rates approved by the city council May 19 are clearly inequable for these members living in our community. Now is the time to exercise your compassion toward those who can least afford paying the exorbitant trash rate increases approved by the council May 19, 2020. As you may know, many communities in California now offer a low-income and/or senior discount for citizens' residential trash pickup service. For example, the city of San Luis Obispo offers a 25% discount rate to qualified citizens. The city of Visalia offers a senior rate of $12.75 a month. That's a 53% discount for their trash pickup. Regarding the senior rate, I have sent Councilwoman Garcia supporting documentation to that effect. It's time for the leadership on the Passerobles City Council to step up and show their support of a solid waste service discount program for those most in need in our community, our senior and low-income citizens. Please institute such a program service to accompany the administration of the new solid waste rates in our city. Thank you very much for your time. I hope to see something happen in this regard. Perhaps a separate meeting might be of value. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borst. And do we have another caller?
Next caller is Jeff Carr, and we do have another caller after him.
Hi, Mr. Carr, we hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, please. Yeah, I have a comment on Section 2 of it. Section 5 of the 2013 franchise agreement has been satisfied and the expiration date is now at December 31, 2027. I found it strange that this is in here because we have, we have one member of the public has been asking for the last weeks or maybe even months now for some backup information on how this was satisfied, how they met the requirements of Section 5 of the original franchise agreement, and who approved it originally back when it was supposed to have been approved. And I thought, and from what I've heard of this gentleman and some of the communications, he didn't get much back in response. You know, I look at Section 5 and it seems to me we should have some little bit of due diligence rather than this simple statement. We should see some proof of sufficient capacity to process the green waste and organics according to this agreement. I should see some proof of necessary permits, proof of operation accordance with all laws within five years of the effective date, maybe a site inspection and a verification of all these capabilities. You know, a date of approval. I would assume maybe at least from the city manager or the council at some point, but I've never seen anything and I haven't received anything in my public records request. So just putting this in as a simple statement is, wow, I mean, what are you trying to do? It just doesn't make sense to me. You have to have some due diligence here on overseeing these issues in the contract. And Section 3, I already mentioned that there were some different, I got some different Section 3s, but I got some okay with the new wording and the one in this packet. And one thing, in Section 6, I noticed that you are actually missing some of the rates from the original franchise agreement. I didn't check them all, but a couple that are missing are, even in residential, they have automated at curb rates, but in the original, they have automated at yard rates. And I know they still do these services because I hadn't actually called them because I noticed it was being done when I was out in the neighborhood. So I'm not sure why those aren't on the current rate schedule. Also, I think you should add some wording in the, for customer billing. I think you've added the street sweeping and you've added this pickup in the downtown. I think you should add those to be included on our monthly bills as separate line items and not just put into our regular rate. Because I think a lot of people aren't even sure or don't know that you've actually put these services in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next caller is Dan Blackburn.
Hi, my name is Dan Black. I'm a 25-year representative of Passerobles. I'd like to address the issue behind this particular amendment. The contract with Passerobles Waste and Recycle extends through 2022 with a five-year extension to 2027 if a particular condition is met. That requirement reads in part, contractor shall place into operation a green waste and organic processing facility of sufficient capacity to process the green waste and organics it collects, unquote. As there is no such new facility as described in the contract, I asked Mr. McKinley for a copy of the agreement between Passerobles Waste and Recycle and the green waste facility that supposedly satisfied the city's contract requirement. On March 3, Mr. McKinley emailed me to say, quote, "I'm not certain that there is an agreement and if so, it is a company document, not a city document," unquote. At that time, I suggested to Mr. McKinley that certainly the city would have a copy of the agreement in order to satisfy the contract requirement. After all, this is worth more than $30 million, this five-year extension. Then on April 21, which is three weeks after my original request, Mr. McKinley sent me an email, quote, "By the way, I found the PRWR/Buckeye agreement. I didn't think I had it. Sorry for the delay," unquote. And he sent me a one-page document he represented to be the agreement. I didn't see a copy of that alleged agreement in tonight's information packet on item 11, so I'd hazard a guess that you council members haven't seen a copy of it. Contact me, I'll get you a copy. The permit and the facility, they don't exist. The extension provision was never met. The contract should be expiring in 2022 and the competitive bidding process for this contract should be starting soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other callers? Melissa?
Yes, we have one more caller for this item, Ann Bell.
Yes, this is Ann Bell. I live at 145 18th Street, Passerobles, California. And I'm a very valued, longtime city volunteer for the Friends of the Library gift store. What I'm calling about is have we ever listened to the other people in all the counties that take their recycle? One week, you take that, and the next week, you take the green waste. And that would save us a ton, a ton of money. I really think that we should look at that. Everybody's talking about that. I lived, I had a home from here for 25 years and I have a home in Shingle Springs in Eldorado County. What you do is you take your green waste, one week, you take the recycle, the next week. Every week, you get your garbage. I paid $40 a month and I hope that you will all listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bell.
No other public comments for this item?
All right, seeing no other comments, I'll bring that back to staff for answering these questions. Who would like to take a shot at it?
Sure, Dick McKinley, public works. So the issue about extending the contract, the language in the agreement calls for them to have green waste compost services. They, rather than building an entire facility, they contracted with Buckeye in the San Miguel area. I have, you know, the documentation that they are doing, that they did that. And in fact, when they notified me at the time that that was how they were going to do that, I personally drove to the Buckeye facility, toured the Buckeye facility, spoke with the people there, confirmed that their facility and the services that they were providing to Passerobles satisfied that requirement in the franchise agreement. The specific language in the franchise agreement says, "The term of this agreement shall be extended for an additional five-year period." And then in parentheses in that sentence, it says, "Without further action by the parties." Meaning, you don't have to go back to council, you don't have to sign a different document. It just means if you meet this, it's five more years. And they met it and it's five more years.
Okay.
What you've heard this evening. It's pretty clear.
So Mr. McKinley, on that same question, then, was that in our original package? It just didn't happen to come into this one?
No, it wasn't because it wasn't really, it isn't really an outstanding question issue. It was put into the franchise agreement in 2013 by the council at that time. They met the requirement. It was an automatic extension if they met the requirement. No further action by the parties required, and that's what happens.
And what about the first caller, John Borst? Had an idea about low-income and senior pricing on the waste recycling?
So that's something that's of the, having a low-income senior discounts, that's something that's common in a lot of states. We haven't really done it in Passerobles and we've had conversations with our city attorney's office about whether you're allowed to do that. Because in essence, what that means is that the other rate payers subsidize the low-income senior rate payers. And that's an issue in California law. But Kimberly's online and she can answer that part of that question.
Sure. So the issue with the subsidy comes under Prop 218. You know, you can't have one rate class subsidizing another. That there may be ways to craft a rate for either low-income or senior users. It just would not, you couldn't increase other rates to then pay for that program. So we'd need to look at what the other program options are.
So Kimberly, would that, if we were to consider that, would that delay the 218 process? Or could we do it after the process is complete?
You can do that after the process is complete. So that's something that you could implement because it wouldn't be reflecting on the changed rates. That's something we could do separate and apart from the other rate pieces of it and from this amendment.
So if somebody on the council wants to suggest that, we could consider it? Okay?
Yes. Yes, we'd need to, we'd need direction to consider it and come back with it, obviously. But yes, we could certainly provide that direction.
Okay. And then I think the final question from Jeff Carr, Section 5, Section 3. Does anybody want to address his concerns? Take that as a no.
What was, yeah, I don't, I thought I'd answered those.
So you had a concern about Section 3 and Section 5. Maybe you did answer one of them.
Section 5 is the one for the automatic extension when they have the green waste and compost facilities.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions?
Protem Gregory?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Al, as being our representative on IWMAs, that many of the waste haulers in the county do the very same thing as Passerobles does. They don't have the ability to physically make a food waste facility, so they contract, just like Passerobles Waste is doing. So it's a new law in the state of California that they all have to do it. And how they do it, though, is up to them. I think our agreement with the city is that it will be done. How they do it is up to them. And I think that's what we're seeing currently in our agreement.
Okay. So is there anybody else in the council like to make a comment on this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go, let's go in order. So Councilman Hammond, any more comments from you?
No, sir.
Councilman Strong?
Yeah, I'm going to agree that Mr. Borst's suggestion should be looked into. PG&E does this, Southern Cal Gas does it. They do it as companies. And possibly it's just a question we can pose to Passerobles Waste and see what their reaction is and if there's anything we can do to help them implement it and discuss it with our attorney. But I think we should at least look into it a little further. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman Strong. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. So like Mr. Hammond was saying, that other companies get this AB 1826 law. I would just, I was thinking that that should at least be worded in there under the terms of Section 5. We should at least have something in there, just like Mr. Hammond said. How they do it is up to them, as long as it gets done and it's required. We should at least have that wording in there under the terms in Section 5. Just like it's got the SB 1383 in here, we should put something about the AB 1826 law is going to be taken care of. How they do it, whether they contract it out or not, I think we should still have it in the terms.
So Kimberly, can you answer, can we do that or amend that at this time?
You're talking about the amendment to Section 5 of the 2013 franchise agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that we don't have in front of you to amend and that would be problematic here. The section and Section 5 lays forth how you get the extension that Mr. McKinley described. So there's other provisions already in that agreement that lay out what the legal requirements are and how, what they have to comply with. So I think that their obligations are covered and they indemnify the city in that 2013 agreement. But we aren't able to change that Section 5 via this First Amendment.
Okay, and Kimberly, I have another question. So is this an appropriate time for the council to ask to bring this back for a future meeting to look at discounting for seniors and low-income?
Yes.
And Mr. Pro-
Yes.
Uh, uh, the, uh, Mr. Borst was talking about, uh, the examples that the other cities have. He did send me those, and I can also share those with, uh, with everyone.
That'd, that'd be great, and I'd send a copy to, uh, Kimberly.
Okay.
So, uh-
And Mr. Merritt?
Go ahead.
Yes, I don't think that precludes our proceeding to, uh, uh, approve, uh, item number 12.
No, I agree with you, but, um-
So, I would move that we do so.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first for approval with Councilman Strong, a second from Councilman Hammond. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
And while Melissa's preparing to call the roll call vote, I just want to correct, it is item 11, not item 12?
Sorry?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, item 11.
Okay. Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Okay. So, I think that takes care of all the consent agenda items, and if somebody could let Mayor Martin know that we're ready for his return to duty.
Yes, I have done that, Mayor Portem Gregory, and also, uh, we, staff is, um, does understand council's direction to work with Paso Waste to examine the potential of either a low-income or low, or, or senior, um, discount, and bring that back to the council when the analysis is complete.
Very good.
So, we're just waiting for the mayor to come back.
No problem, I'm just being quiet. It's hard.
Okay, am I, am I good to be on, uh, be in the meeting now?
You're good, sir. We're done talking.
Yes, welcome back.
Okay, you're done talking about me? I doubt that, but, uh, thank you very much. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate you taking over there. Um, before I go on, Mr. Frigsh, were you given the opportunity to give a report on the consent calendar actions?
No, Mayor Portem did not want to take that joy away from you, so no, I have not done that yet.
Well, lots is hard. Could you please give the community an idea of what we did in passing separate items on the consent calendar?
Would be glad to, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that opportunity. Tonight on the council's consent calendar, it approved the minutes from the meeting of May 19th, and it did correct those. Thank you for the correction. In addition, it approved the warrant register, and the warrant register is the listing of checks that the city writes to pay for the goods and services it receives. This warrant register totaled approximately $2 million, of which 1.2 million was for water and wastewater projects, and that includes a progress payment on the 21st Street reservoir. The council also received advisory body minutes from the Parks and Rec Commission and the Library Board of Trustees. It does not approve those, they approve their own, but the council, um, receives those in draft form, since those are advisory bodies to the council, and council should be aware and be able to, uh, give direction if needed. The council also approved a major project for downtown road repairs on Sixth Street, Ninth Street, Tenth Street, and Park Street, and those are two contracts, one for the actual construction, and second for construction management. The coun, council also approved the MOU with Onex Renewables, and that, as Mr. McKinley explained, was at the request of FAA, so that hopefully they will now be willing to approve the agreement that was actually written and informally approved by the FAA, uh, almost five years ago. We've been waiting that long for final approval. The council approved two grant applications to Slocoght, which is chaired by our own council member Strong. One is for a safe routes to school project around Flamston School, and the second is a safe routes to school project around Lewis Middle School. And in both those cases, the city will be required to, if we are successful in our grant application, to, uh, offer a match, but it's a 10-to-1 ratio between Slocoght funds and city funds. And so even in this time of budget, uh, crisis, a 10-to-1 ratio is absolutely worth pursuing. The council also confirmed, uh, Ryan Cornell as finance director, and I'm particularly appreciative of the council doing that and of the council expressing its confidence in Mr. Cornell since becoming first the interim finance director and now confirmed finance director. He's been doing an absolutely fabulous job. Uh, the council also annexed track 3038 into landscaping and lighting district, and as you know, you have a public hearing on that district and its rates later in your agenda for tonight. And finally, the council approved surplusing, um, some property the note, the city no longer needs, and this is an interesting, um, piece of surplus property, because it's a live being, it is a police dog, and this particular dog has served the city very well. It's now reached the end of its useful career, almost, but because the officer, um, who works with the dog is leaving the force, it did not make sense to attempt to retrain the dog to work with a new officer, uh, given the advanced years of the dog. So, we will be wishing this dog and its, um, owner well as they go forward, the next phases of both their lives, and replacing this dog with a new, a dog new to the force. And that, Mr. Mayor, is the consent calendar approvals for, from tonight.
Thank you. We move on now to discussion. Item number 14, COVID-19 economic recovery measures. Parklets, this is continued from the May 19th meeting. I want to remind people listening in, if they'd like to make public comment, the number to call is 805-865-7276.
Mayor Martin?
Yes?
Mayor Martin, Steve Gregory, I'm going to recuse myself from this item. I spoke to the city attorney today, and, uh, just for a declaration or disclosure, I did speak to Carol McDonald yesterday about this item, and I did have a brief conversation with Mayor Martin. So, I'll be recusing myself, so if somebody will call me when you're done, I'd appreciate it.
Very good, thank you. Uh, record shows that, uh, Councilman Gregory is recusing himself on this item, um, as he turned off his electronic paraphernalia.
Melissa or Dave, would you please let the mayor know if Steve is in fact off the line?
He is leaving the meeting right now. He's gone from the room.
Very good, thank you. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Warren Frase, Community Development Director. As I mentioned, uh, the city engineer, Dave Athie, is on the line for technical questions. Um, this is a continuation of a discussion from the previous meeting. Um, we're looking at, uh, variety of COVID-19 economic recovery measures, so this falls under this umbrella. This is what we're calling the Parklet Program, which the, is the idea of temporarily using public rights-of-way and parking lots for expanded outdoor seating for restaurants and retail uses. This has been a joint program with a group, um, we're referring to as the Paso Strong Partners, which consists of the City of Paso Robles, uh, Travel Paso Robles, uh, the Hispanic Business Association, the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce, the Paso Robles Wine Country Alliance, and then the Downstreet, Downtown Main Street Association. So, this group's been working together on this program for the last month or so. Um, so as you'll recall, you know, we, we've experienced a lot of economic impacts as a result of the COVID-19 sheltering orders. Um, our local businesses have been significantly impacted, um, especially restaurants and retail throughout the community as well as downtown, and those downtown businesses especially, um, really are part of a overall ecosystem that supports the tourism and wine, um, country, uh, experience in the area, and it is really vital that all these, um, components, um, remain economically healthy, um, moving forward. One of the unique issues that restaurants are going to, or are experiencing as part of the reopening is, um, they have to reduce their occupancies, increase separation for customers, which reduces the number of tables that they have available, um, which impacts their bottom line economically. So, one of the issues, um, that the Paso Robles Strong Partners have been dealing with through a series of eight different roundtable Zoom conferences, um, which were well-attended by up to 60 different downtown businesses, was really the need to figure out some creative ways to help to offset some of these impacts and reductions in occupancy for restaurants. So, as we went through these series of meetings over the last month or so, I think four key, um, themes came out of those meetings, and one was the need for restaurants to have a variety of additional outdoor seating options to improve their, um, economic, uh, performance. And specifically, they were asking for the ability to create a enhanced dining program with alcohol, um, within the city park. They were also asking about street closures, and then third, the idea of creating these interim parklets in parking areas for additional seating. So, at the May 19th meeting, your last council meeting, the council basically gave us, um, direction on those items. So, the first thing, the council did authorize the establishment of the city park dining program. So, the city staff is now working with the partners on moving this forward. Um, it's envisioned that that will become, um, operational in the next week or so. The issue of the street closure was tabled, so there was no action on that item at this point. And then regarding the parklet policy, um, city council continued that item, referred it back to staff and the partners for additional review and analysis. So, that's what we're, um, doing tonight, is we're just reviewing the parklet policy and trying to fill in some of the additional information that the council, um, requested before they make a formal decision. So, some of the additional information that was requested was more information on parklet designs, design standards, what other communities around the country are doing in regards to that. Um, we attached links to four different documents. Um, these are guidelines and programs from around the state and country. Um, the San Francisco Parklet Manual is especially well-known, so there's a link to that. City of Long Beach has a similar program, so we provided information on that. Uh, Grand Rapids, Michigan, has a detailed program that was attached, and most recently, the City of Oxnard's also developed a program. So, that information was provided, um, to the public and the council for additional information. And we also, uh, found a new document that was just released by NATCO, which is the National Association of Traffic, um, City Officials. Um, and basically, this was designed just to deal with reuse of streets during the pandemic. Um, so there's some additional information in terms of how to better, uh, share streets and public spaces, um, for pedestrian use as well as retail and dining. So, that additional information was provided. Um, we also did some additional outreach to businesses, um, trying to get some more input in terms of their is, interest and concerns about the parklet issue specifically. Um, we did receive two specific letters of interest, um, requesting the ability to create parklets. Those were attachment two of the staff report. So, there's a letter from Regency Center, um, which operates the Lowe's Center on the east side of town. Um, they definitely want to be able to close some of their parking areas to create enhanced and expanded restaurant dining facilities, so, um, we received that. And then the backyard, which is the Beer Garden, um, downtown on Railroad and 13th Street, um, they also submitted a letter of interest. They're very interested in being able to convert this existing parking lot into expanded seating area, um, for the summer. And then a number of the other businesses around the park have also, um, submitted emails and comments, I think that are a part of your addendum to the staff report tonight, also expressing interest in participating in some sort of parklet program. So, based on all the information that we've received, staff has modified our recommendation. Um, so now we are recommending that the resolution also include the provision that private parking lots throughout the entire town can also be provide, per, P, converted temporarily into enhanced, um, parklet or seating areas. So, that's a new recommendation. Um, we understand that the impact of parklets on downtown parking is a concern. We're recommending that we limit it to just five parklets downtown, um, that the city engineer would be able to approve. Once we hit five, we would come back to the council for additional direction. That would limit the amount of parking that would be impacted to probably an estimated 15 spaces maximum. Um, we're also going to use our current encroachment agreement that we use for sidewalk cafes on the, uh, parklets if we're approved to move forward, and that would address the use areas, um, insurance and maintenance, and then removal of the, the parklet feature. And then we've added a recommendation to waive the permitting fees for the first 90 days to encourage, um, these to get going quickly, um, but in, not make it a permanent waiver. The Paso Strong's Partner Group also prepared a survey. Um, this was, uh, circulated and was well-responded to. They received over 1,100 responses to this survey. Um, the questions dealt with, um, the interest in and support for parklets within the downtown. Um, based on the survey, 80% supported parklets, 15, um, expressed that they were not supportive of parklets in the downtown. So, let's talk about what parklets are. So, specifically, they're seating areas in parking areas, and that would either be in the street, or they could be in a parking lot area. Um, as we mentioned, other cities have done it. San Francisco has one of the better-tested programs, but there's a lot of examples throughout the country. Um, parklets can be very simple, they can be fancy. Um, we're envisioning that these are going to be more simple, based on that these are to deal with the economic issues we're experiencing right now. They're going to be available to restaurants and retail, so literally any business downtown, um, would be able to install a parklet. The business is responsible for the cost of installation and the maintenance of the parklet. So, it's an optional program, and all the costs belong to the businesses. And like I said, we've also included, um, private parking lots so that they can, um, benefit as well. So, quick overview, um, the way it would work in the downtown is that the business, um, located next to the street would make the decision that they want to convert the parking that's just in front of their business, not somebody else's business, into the, into the parklet. Um, we have mainly diagonal spaces, so the parklets would fit within the diagonal spaces. Basically, what we're talking about is just creating a, a deck that's flush with the sidewalk, where you would walk smoothly from the sidewalk onto the deck area, and then this deck area would be the additional seating available for the restaurant. We would go through what's called this city engineer's encroachment permit process, so that would review the design, both the appearance and construction, as well as, um, the inspection of it when it's in. So, the, um, city engineer process would make sure we have a, a properly-designed, um, aesthetically appealing, um, parklet that's also designed safely. So, vehicular safety is an issue. Um, there would be railings around the side, there'd be reflectors and safety markers installed as well, to minimize any risk of, uh, issues with cars. Um, because these are in the public right-of-way, they would be available to the public, um, including people from the restaurant. Um, as I mentioned, the business is responsible for the maintenance. This is envisioned as a one-year program, with the possibility that the city council could entertain extensions if they're happy with the program moving forward. And as I mentioned, it also includes parking lots. So, the way these are going to be constructed, they'll go through the city engineer's, um, encroachment process. We envision this as an expedited process. Um, we expect that permitting cost typically to be a thousand to $2,000 for cost recovery to cover staff's time. That's what we're recommending, we waive for the first 90 days, and after that, you would have to pay the full cost, um, for staff time. These are basically decks, so they'll have to be built under the California Building Code, um, but it's a fairly simple installation that is supported on top of the asphalt. We're going to require protective rails, walls, um, you could also use planters, you could add umbrellas, shades, even space heaters in the future if necessary. It's going to be ADA compliant, so if it's flat, it should work just fine. Um, it will be designed to allow stormwater to pass through and under it, and then the architectural enhancements, characters of it, um, planning staff will review that along with the city engineer, make sure these are attractive features, and as I mentioned, safety features, um, will be incorporated. In terms of what's going to be required, Exhibit A to the resolution outlines the minimum requirements, um, that the city engineer, um, will be utilizing, will be incorporating some of the best practices from some of the other city guidelines that have been attached. Um, so the city engineer will, um, issue the encroachment permit when he's satisfied that it's properly designed, will also require that encroachment agreement to be signed before the permit is issued. Um, the design standards will make sure we, we have a quality product that meets minimum safety and appearance standards. The city engineer, um, will be inspecting these, so they can't be used until they're built, um, properly to the city's standards. Um, we've already had a conversation with a local contractor that's working with a local restaurant on a template design. Um, it's envisioned that this template design could then be used by other restaurants, so we would, um, be able to permit these quickly and have a very, uh, quality uniform design throughout the downtown, so that's something we're working on already. If this is approved, then we can move to the next step on that. If this is approved, then we can move to the next step on that. So the recommendation tonight, staff is recommending city council approve Resolution X. That would authorize the temporary city parklet permitting policy. There's basically three provisions. One is to authorize a city engineer to issue the encroachment permits for a maximum of five parklets for a one-year period, with the possibility of time extensions. The second part is to authorize a community development director to approve temporary conversions of private parking lots into outdoor seating parklets. And then the third part would be to waive the parklet encroachment permitting fees for a period of 90 days, starting with the approval of the resolution. So that concludes staff's report. I do know that a couple of the chamber partners are on the line and will also have some input. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any council questions.
So Warren, do you want to make that part of the presentation, or are they just going to make public comment?
Last time, we made it part of the presentation. It seems like that might be good to do the same thing.
So I have nine people on the list. Who is part of the presentation?
Hang on, we're checking right now?
We have Gina Grebe from Main Street Association. We have Joel Peterson from Wine Country Alliance. Gina Fitzpatrick from the Chamber. Paul Sloan from the Chamber. Stacy Jacob from Travel Paso.
Can you put Stacy Jacob on, please?
All these people are going to speak as part of the presentation?
I would recommend we hear from Stacy Jacobs and Paul Sloan.
Very good. So let's go to Stacy. Stacy, are you with us?
The parklet issue back up for consideration. We feel that a lot of the questions that were proposed during the last council meeting have been addressed. We also have reached out even broader for support from the various restaurants to figure out who is interested in the parklet structures. Very pleased, some of them are on the phone, and you'll be hearing from them. You also have received several comments from them. As presented, there are really two structures. Those that would be specifically in the parking areas, and those that would be in more parking lot areas, of which that variety works very nicely in our downtown perspective. I wanted to also comment, as part of your open comment period, we know that one of the concerns, of course, is parking. And as Warren had mentioned, there would be approximately 15 parking spaces impacted. We have reached out to several private business owners that have private parking lots within a two to four-block radius of the park and have already identified up to 50 spaces that have been said that they could be used specifically during this time period to help minimize the impact on parking. We actually have more asks out and feel that that number will grow. So we know that we will be taking parking spaces out of circulation for the recommended parklet program, but we actually feel like we've actually enhanced that by more private support for folks. So we feel like that has been offset, and we would work very hard in our communication to communicate to folks where those additional parking spaces are at. We fully support the fee is being waived. We also are very proud of the survey results that came back indicating over 80% supporting parklets. And this is really, for us, all about getting the Paso Robles Tourism ecosystem rebooted. There were three options that were brought to you at the last council, the dining in the park, the interim parklets, and third was street closures. So tonight, we're hoping that two of those three will be implemented, that we can continue working with businesses as we do reboot the tourism ecosystem overall. Finally, the survey did ask for street closures. We realize that is not a topic tonight, but hope that you will take a look at those, that feedback, some of the very specific dialogue that was given, and consider looking at that for the future. But tonight, we do ask the support for parklets, and we'll be standing by for additional questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sloan, your turn. Mr. Sloan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for the chance to speak on the subject again. And as Mr. Frase mentions, it's been a great ongoing collaboration between all of our partner organizations, and very productively. And we're very pleased to see these things move forward for the downtown and for the business sector. Mr. Frase actually covered the key points for the survey very well that you have in your packet. There's an overview document, as well as the actual survey questionnaire, and then all of the results from the questions that we received back, well over 1,000 responses. We looked at several different surveys, just to give you a background of it, from the National Main Street Association, as well as from the city of St. Louis and others, to come up with some concise questions. So you have the content, as Mr. Frase summarized very well. If you have any questions about the survey, I'm here.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Frase. Mr. Sloan and Ms. Jacob for that information. We're going to go to the council for questions of staff and of the presenters. And I'd remind council, this is our opportunity to ask questions. Probably not the time for us to actually offer solutions. We want to wait until we hear from the public before we do that. And we do have seven members of the public online waiting to speak. So with that, I will go for council questions to Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm on now. Again, I was wanting to get a little more information from Mr. Sloan about the survey. And do we know the density of the downtown responding versus the people outside the downtown responding to that survey?
Good question. Mr. Sloan, are you still available? Do we have anyone who can answer that question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. If it's for me, this is Paul Sloan.
Yeah, Paul.
Go ahead, John.
Counselman Hammond, I was asking, did you have any determination or percentage-wise from the approximately 1,100 people that responded to your survey, of those in the downtown and those outside the downtown district?
The very first question in the survey was, are you a resident of the city of Paso Robles? And 80% of respondents said yes, and 20% said they're not. And I know people that just happen to contact me because they live just outside the city limits, and they said, can we still do it? I said, of course. It's just a question of determining. But is 80%, 20%, 80% are self-identifying as residents within the city limits of Paso Robles?
Okay. And the additional parking, I'm really interested in hearing more about that because I was definitely not wanting to take our public parking away from people. But if we can add additional private parking areas, can you tell us more about that?
Sure. Actually, all of us in the working group have sort of reached out to different businesses. And not speaking out of turn necessarily, but we have, as Stacy said, identified several right around the downtown core of private areas. And maybe if Stacy wants to know. I believe that one of the owners sent a letter in to council, specifically saying that they have 38 spots that they're willing to offer for this. I'm in contact with representative of another owner that has 12 spots. And Stacy has another one that has 10 to 15. And then we have another one still pending. And these are all just within one block of the park. So we have a, we'll get concrete things in writing, but the conversations are very positive. These owners are very interested to have, to be able to support downtown commerce.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Strong?
Yes, actually, I've got quite a few questions. First of all, I'm always interested in what is fair and equitable. And I'm looking at, if we're going to look at the downtown as from Spring to Pine, from 11th to 14th, there's about nine linear blocks in that area. And I would think that on an equitable basis, we should have at least nine parklets, in that case, one per block, and that they would not be specific to any business, that every, any business on that block then could use the parklet. And that would be fair or equitable. I'm also wondering, and that's a question, as to was that thought of? The other thing is because I'm--
--council, just to check in to see if you wanted to extend it. That's just, you know, one recommendation. If the council wanted to change that, allocate them by blocks, allocate more units, that's clearly something that's possible. We're not limiting this just to the downtown. Pretty much any business in town that's not on an arterial street would qualify for this. So we can keep that in mind as well. In terms of just the overall public benefit, as we mentioned, because these are in the public right of way, they are available to the public. So although the restaurant or retail business would install them, provide the seats and the maintenance, they're not going to be exclusive just to the business. So that basically addresses the public benefit issue. The public can use them as well. One of the comments that we got previously was that this needed to be available to retail businesses as well as restaurants. So staff's recommendation is that retail establishments could also install a parklet. I think they have less of an interest probably in doing it, but we didn't want to exclude one if they potentially were interested. But that's obviously something the council could modify as well.
You good, Fred?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. So on the number five, we got here, issue up to five permit. Those five are just for the downtown or for the whole city?
So the five would be limited to the ones in the street. We envision those mainly happening within the downtown or the east side. That's where we have the slow streets in the commercial zones. So I imagine all five of those are going to end up, more or less, on the downtown side of town. The parking lot ones would be unlimited. So if, say, the Lowe's Center wanted to have one or two, that would be fine. There wouldn't be a limit on it in shopping centers.
Okay. Okay. That's all I got for now. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you. Warren, I have a few questions. I'm still, I can't stand confused, but wondering, we are going to offer the opportunity to local private business to build a public facility. Is that correct?
So I think it's kind of a hybrid facility. So the local business will get the permit and pay to construct and maintain this parklet space. Then they'll have the opportunity to put their tables and chairs in there for their customers. But there won't be some sort of exclusive restriction where the general public couldn't use them or sit there or enjoy them as well.
Okay, and it's, I'm not saying it won't work. I'm just saying it sounds strange.
Yeah.
How would a retail store use this? Obviously, you put tables up, people sit down and have a hamburger. But if I'm selling shoes and I want to have a parklet, how do I use that?
Well, I guess it would be kind of more in the sidewalk sale model. So if, I guess, they wanted to put some merchandise out there or do some advertising, that sort of thing. Or if they just wanted people to be able to sit in front of their business, I think it would really be up to the retail business to determine how and why they would want one.
Okay. You mentioned something there, advertising. What will be the policy regarding signage on these parklets?
So there wouldn't be signage necessarily allowed. The downtown businesses already can have their A-frame signs. But I guess if there was thematic, you know, merchandise or landscaping or things like that to draw attention to their business, they could definitely use the parklet to kind of enhance their street facade.
Mm-hmm. And then if I'm a store owner, if I'm a business person, and I'm one of these parklet developer slash hybrid owner users, and the business right next door to me wants to use it too, do I have exclusive use of it?
So I think as the business, yeah, you would have the exclusive business use of it. So your neighboring restaurant that didn't pay for it, they wouldn't be able to program it for their restaurant use.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So talk to me a little bit about, since we have this hybrid situation, who makes, who applies for the encroachment permit? Is the business owner or the property owner?
Either could.
Okay. So when it comes to indemnifying the city, are we asking either or both to have some sort of insurance policy to make sure that if somebody trips and falls, we don't get sued for it? Or if we do, we don't have to pick up the bill?
So whoever the applicant for the encroachment permit is, which could be the business owner or the property owner, they will sign the agreement, and they will provide the insurance indemnification.
So that would be an actual insurance policy? How would that work?
Yeah, they have to, under our standard agreement, provide $2 million liability insurance in favor of the city.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, I think I had one more if I can find it on my list here. So you had talked about the expense, $1,000 to $2,000 in an encroachment permit. And then assuming we all settle on a template, which I'm not sure if we've done that yet or not, what is the actual construction cost going to be?
Well, we don't know that. That's why we're working with this local contractor to hopefully come up with a template that then could be, we could determine a cost on it. So we're not to a point of figuring out the cost to the business owner.
It would be hard for me as a business owner to apply for this if I didn't know what it was going to cost, especially in a one-year pilot program.
Yeah, so it's like any other construction-type project. It would be the applicant, which is the business owner, that they would determine the design. They would estimate what the cost is. I think the city's trying to help with this template process so that that's a little easier and more predictable for future businesses. But right now, it's this first business owner that's going to basically kind of spearhead the process. And then that will hopefully develop a template that at least will have a base cost for a parklet.
So do you see us in connection with the folks who are interested in developing these, putting an actual template together so there's some uniformity? Are we going to go for the eclectic look, or how's that going to work?
Well, I think they can be either or. They could be all the same, or if people wanted to design their own so we get a more of eclectic look, either would be permissible. The idea is that this contractor that's coming up with a template then would, I believe, make it available to other businesses. And then they basically would hire that contractor to build that template design.
Mm-hmm. This is, this is really, I mean, realistically speaking, this is going to turn into a permanent program, right? I mean, I can't see people investing thousands of dollars in something and then at the end of the year, tearing it out.
Well, that'll be a council decision. So the agreements will be for one year. It'll be up to the council to give direction about whether you want these to remain or not. If, the agreements will require removal in one year unless the council authorizes it to go further.
I think if you have 85% of 1,100 people favoring this, the council's going to have a difficult time making this a temporary program. That wasn't a question. I apologize. I have no further questions. We're going to go to public comment. I have nine people on the list. I hope you've all been patient, because we're going to give each and every one of you your opportunity to speak. Once again, we want to tell people who want to speak and just tuned in, they don't know how to do that. They should call 805-865-7276. We ask you to state your name so everybody knows who you are. And we are happy to give you three minutes. So we're going to start at the top of my list. Gina Grebe from the Main Street Association. Gina, are you with us?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Martin. City council members, city officials, businesses, and residents. I'm Gina Grebe, 1535 Vine Street. I'm Director of Marketing and Events for Paso Robles Downtown Main Street Association. Paso Main Street Association represents our downtown businesses, and we acknowledge that Paso Robles Downtown retail businesses are continuing to face COVID-19-related challenges. As we continue to advocate, rather, for these organizations, we share relevant information when helpful and assist with economic recovery. Main Street, we continue to collaborate with the city as well as our partnering community stakeholders, the Chambers, Travel Paso, Paso Wine Alliance, on our local recovery plan for Paso Robles Downtown businesses to open safely and result in success. Paso Robles Downtown Main Street Association is accredited-- Paso Robles Downtown Main Street Association is accredited member of National Main Street Association. We are informed on a weekly basis on how unique downtowns and main streets throughout the United States have been extremely creative in how to make positive temporary logistic changes to support their downtown businesses and communities. Obviously, every downtown is different, including Paso Robles. And if and how we continue to creatively consider the implementation of temporary recovery solutions, such as what's been approved, the dining in the park, and tonight, consideration of parklets, and possibly in the future, road closures for our downtown. Main Street, including our team and members, a diverse group of downtown businesses as well as local businesses, board members, all offer differing viewpoints on recovery efforts. Regardless of our varying viewpoints on implementation details, all are uniform and deeply committed to the overall recovery plan to support and the success of our downtown businesses. The sentiment is to create and expedite a temporary economic downtown recovery plan that not only economically is successful, but also safe for our downtown community. Main Street's tagline is "Where everyone comes together and stays well together." We look forward to continuing to support our downtown businesses while promote our residents to visit our safe downtown. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for your comments. We do appreciate it. Up next on my list, I have Debbie Thomas. Debbie is the owner of Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, yes. Thank you, Mayor Martin. I am supporting all creative options right now to keep our businesses open. I am in favor of moving forward with the parklet, but I believe it should be open to more businesses than just five. And we need to waive the parklet permit fees. We, as businesses, have lost a lot of money in the last couple of months. I can tell you, just for myself, last month, I lost over six figures. And I don't have to tell you, I can't sustain that going forward. Also, although closing streets is not an option this evening that we're talking about, I think that needs to be added to the agenda on the next meeting. We just need to think of creative options to keep our businesses open. You know, lots of cities in California right now are opening up spaces on streets, they're utilizing parking spots, they're altering traffic patterns to allow for street closures, obviously all to ensure that their businesses survive. I ask that parklets move forward and that we look to add street closures for the next city council meeting. This will certainly help ensure our business survives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next on my list, I have Carol McDonald, the owner of Il Quartile Restaurant. Carol, welcome.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Hello? Okay. Thank you again. We are the owners of Il Quartile and La Quiseta Bar and Restaurant. And as with Debbie, what she had been speaking about the loss of revenue, we are in that same position. And even though there was a bustling atmosphere since the day the county let us open, when we're, you know, 35% to 40% capacity, yes, we will be busy at 35% or 40%, but we're only making 35% or 40% of what we were making a year ago. Our losses have been substantial. And again, the creative options are in great need. So I agree with Debbie. I think five are too little. You know, like if we were to be interested in two, I wouldn't want to apply for two permits. I would feel that would be unfair to some of the other businesses downtown. But we are looking for every option to add more seats. If we, as business owners, implement the cost of building the parklet, the cost of insurance, I have not gotten a firm answer from my insurance company yet because they were looking for answers from this meeting to let me know how much it would be to add to my insurance policy to cover you. And we would be, you know, having the maintenance costs, having the additional costs for ABC, all of those additional costs. I would not want people coming to the parklet and sit at my tables and not eat. I would hope that we would come up with some sort of solution that if you were going to be seated in the parklet, that you would have to eat and, you know, enjoy food and beverages from our restaurants. It would be kind of senseless for me to spend all that money and then have people just sit there because it was an open area. And then again, in addressing the parking spaces, we, you know, we have been working really, really hard and talking to a lot of other businesses, and we can, we can come up with better parking solutions. And I do think that, you know, maybe we also come up with a drop-off area for people that might be disabled or, you know, not able to walk very far. But I just, I just believe that we have creative solutions and can explore those creative solutions to add more parking to the downtown area. I understand people's hesitations on this. I understand the whole parking situation and really, really feel for it. But I feel like we're working really, really hard to come up with solutions for that. And I do believe that there are two sides to every story, and I think that the people that are coming up with the solutions and working to enhance the downtown experience should have the opportunity to, sorry, I realize it's my time up, but should have the opportunity to express themselves and come up with solutions that are viable to increase their business.
Thank you so much. Take care. Joel Peterson. Joel is the Executive Director of the Wine and Country Alliance. Joel, are you with us?
I am, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We are pleased to see the parklet proposal back on the city council agenda tonight. This concept allows for an option that will help local businesses and the local economy recover as quickly as possible. It also addresses the public health and safety issue by allowing expanded outdoor dining, which is significantly safer in light of our current COVID-19 situation. As point 17 in the staff report notes, and in term parklet policy, with expanding permit times and minimal permitting costs to restaurants could be rapidly started. This is a unique program that is feasible and will not only encourage diners, but may also likely improve the overall ambiance of an already thriving downtown. We are supportive of this idea to help our restaurants in downtown survive. In challenging and odd times like this, we need to be creative and find innovative solutions. We need to be bold and listen to what the community wants. Over 1,000 people chimed in on a survey, and over 80% were in strong support of this parklet idea. I look forward to being part of the solution to keep our downtown a vibrant and special place. I appreciate the conversation, the hard work, the conversations surrounding this idea tonight, and I think it's good for our downtown. So appreciate your time and good luck tonight.
Hello, are you there? Yeah, we dropped out there for a minute, sorry.
Okay. Did you hear me? Do I need to keep talking?
I missed the last part of what you were saying, Joel. If you want to give me about the last 10 seconds, it would be helpful.
I just said I'd look forward to being part of this solution and keeping our downtown a special place, and thanks for your time on this effort tonight. And we wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, up next, we have Gina Fitzpatrick. Gina is the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Gina, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
I can, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmen and a woman. I will keep this very short and sweet. I'm pleased to share that the Paso Robles Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors supports the parklets in concept with the expectation that they would be subject to the design and review committee and approval by the city's Community Development Director and City Engineer. I just want to thank you for your time. We worked hard on this, and it's great to see it come before you to be able to make a decision on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Appreciate your comments and your... Mary Weisinger, Wine and Country Barbecue. Jeffrey, are you with us?
I am, thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
I appreciate, good evening to you. Appreciate you allowing me to take the time to speak to you all. I also appreciate the staff's recommendations, and I support them. All the information that was shared by the staff, I thought was fantastic. They did their research and everything that they brought forth, I support. And I thank the council for asking such great questions as well, especially regarding Councilman Strong's assessment of the nine-block radius that encompasses downtown. I agree in full support with Debbie and Carol in regards to the fact that five spaces, I don't believe is enough. If Councilman Strong has identified nine blocks, I believe nine would be a minimum number that we should really be looking at to allow for parklets. And I very much am in support of parklets. It's extremely important that we look at the impact that the parklets will have on food and beverage operations specifically. And I also agree with some of the other comments that were made, that the parklets are designed to increase the revenues of food and beverage operations that have lost dramatically revenue streams. So in order to have these make sense, as much as I came into this meeting supporting the idea for other retail operations, as Councilman Strong had mentioned, you can wear a mask when you're in other retail operations, but it's the food and beverage operations, the restaurants specifically, that need to have additional areas available for their customers and their guests. I love the idea that the contractor who's involved would be the one to get to bid. I think that's a fantastic use of city resources and private resources. Whoever's creating these templates, I think we should go forward with allowing that contractor to be the one to design all of this. And keeping it in mind, again, that it's for food and drink. So as much as it's accessible to the community as a whole, it's really designed to help the food and beverage restaurant operations recover the significant losses that we've impacted. The private parking would be great if we could, if we get some more dining options available in the private parking spots. But I appreciate you all taking this on. There are some other points regarding the street closures that I would like to address down the road when, if that becomes an agenda item. I appreciate your efforts that you've made for the city park, and I'd like to also suggest that we continue to push that forward, allowing alcohol consumption in the Paso Robles City Park has been a huge benefit to the restaurant group in our area. And the City of Tascadero has been doing it for quite some time, from what I understand. And the more that we could emphasize alcohol consumption in the downtown city park for restaurants to be able to serve food and drinks in the park would be great. Thank you guys for your time and the effort that you're putting forth. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Eric Jensen, Booker Winery. Mr. Jensen, are you with us?
Hey, guys, can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
Perfect, thanks. Hey, Warren, Stacy, and Paul, fantastic job leading the community, staying relentless. Joel, I know you've been there as well, want to commend the four of you. I get tremendously excited when entrepreneurs get together and get creative. And somebody said a couple weeks ago that kind of everybody else should get out of the way and let the business people handle this, and, you know, it's kind of the way I feel. Parking, first of all, council, this is the easiest decision you're going to make all year, the parklets. Parking, that situation's your problem, and it was the problem of your predecessors, and no one's done anything about it. But leave it to the entrepreneurs, they've stepped in, and great job securing additional parking. And my guess is whatever Stacy, you and Paul have come up with, you'll be able to double that number. So anybody that steps up and says, "Well, we can't do this, there's no parking," is out of line because there is parking. It's find a, give me a problem and I'll give you a solution, and that's what these entrepreneurs did. So congrats on that. So that eliminates the issue that everybody's going to have here. Number one on approval, Warren, great job, but no limits on these parklets. That's, it doesn't make any sense. There's no logic with saying, "Oh, we should do five." You could do five, you could do 55. They should be uniform, they should look good. We've put a lot into the downtown, let's not just let it, let it get eclectic and crazy. So let's hold tight there. As far as letting city use in these, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard in my life. COVID has allowed the ABC to waive walk-away alcohol. I'm 100% sure for the next three to four months, you can tell the city, they don't get to sit in these if they don't buy from those restaurants. That's not, that's a non-starter. That's ludicrous if that's even on the table. There's plenty of parks that are empty right now that no one's in, so let's remove that. Retail shops should absolutely take advantage of this because you guys keep saying, "Well, they can wear a mask." Yes, they can, but those guys are only allowed to have five or six people in their stores at a time, it's not enough to stay open. So if they want to, they should have the right to. I don't think they will. I would. I'd be, shit, I'd open up outdoors immediately. And then street closures. Street closures is a must. I moved it to the council, I urge you guys to call an emergency meeting to approve temporary street closures this week until you can get these parklets up and running. That would, COVID has forced all of us to work outside. My winery, we have to do all tastings outside. It has forced us to do it, so desperate times, call for creative measures, close the streets for two or three weeks until the parklets get built, and then you can stop doing that. Don't let money be an issue, I've already talked to several of you about that. But get the streets closed. Every other city does it with much more difficult ingress egress and much more difficult issues. I'm certain that Santa Monica's traffic problem is a little more serious than ours, yet they've got the Third Street Promenade, Slow's problem is pretty bad, yet they seem to do it every Thursday for probably 40 years. I'm positive for two or three weeks, we can do it without affecting business. And the people that are against it are, you're going to find out, are the people that have outdoor seating. So it's, I need it, I need parking spots. But that problem has been solved by Stacy and Paul.
Three minutes, sir. That's three minutes, sir. Could you summarize, please?
Yeah, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Julian Asayo. Julian, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us. Again, I think there's been a lot of great things that we've discussed so far moving forward. I personally am in big favor of the parklet situation. Unlike a lot of other businesses and my co-small business owner that were on this phone tonight, I'm looking in on Spring Street. So for me, Spring Street is going to be, you know, almost impossible to create a parklet on Spring Street. But I do have a huge, I mean, it's not mine, but there's a huge parking lot right alongside of my restaurants where I think a parklet would be ideal. It wouldn't take hardly any parking space. I mean, there's about 40 parking spots on that parking. Again, I, you know, I don't think it would affect a lot of the parking. And just like all my fellow restaurant owners and small business owners I've mentioned tonight, it's a necessity for us, you know? It's a necessity after getting hit so hard by COVID and having to rely on those restrictions of being limited to seating capacity. I mean, already restaurants' margins are extremely low, and I don't want to complain about that during that phone call, but I'm just saying that in order to survive, not just as restaurant, but as business owner, you know, we have to move forward and like we've been doing, find solutions. So I obviously think that the parklet solution, in my opinion, is the best. It's been done before, it's still being done right now around the country and state of California. Again, I think it promotes outdoor seating, which right now is what we need to focus on because outdoor seating is the future, especially with what's going on. And it allows us to, again, have a few more tables, being able to keep our doors open. And once again, I think the food and beverage, you know, is extremely crucial to the economy and also the social... the economy and also the, the social field of Paso Robles and the Central Coast. Uh, without wineries and restaurants, um, Paso Robles wouldn't be what it is. And so I, I really urge, you know, to, uh, to be able to, to really move forward with the idea of the parklets. Uh, obviously, I think as it was mentioned earlier, it is gonna be tricky to have, uh, you know, to pay for the fees and, uh, the actual installment of the parklet if it's only, um, temporary, you know? So I think that's definitely something that we have to look into. And again, I think if it's well controlled, well maintained, uh, if everything is done the right way, I don't see an issue on why we shouldn't be able to keep those parklets, uh, as part of downtown Paso Robles. So once again, uh, I wanna thank you everyone and to, uh, especially the people that have been helping us, uh, Paul and, um, Stacy and everyone else, you know, who've really been really proactive for, for the wonderful community and the small business of Paso Robles. And to you Mayor and councils for, for listening and, uh, hearing our voices.
Thank you, sir, for your comments, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up, up next we have Sally Reynolds. Sally should be online waiting for us, are you there Sally?
I am here.
Welcome.
Welcome. Mayor, City Council, it's nice to be with you tonight. Congratulations on the, um, peaceful presentation in our city. So back to parklets, I found it, um, I was a little surprised that I sent in my comments and I don't see them anywhere. I didn't wanna have to speak, so I wrote, wrote them and, and I didn't see them in the comment section.
Okay, we'll check on that.
I, I find it interesting that most of the people speaking were from the tourism groups and because of COVID-19, I was under the impression we were not promoting tourism yet. Is that a fair fact? I know that you can't come and stay in the city of San Luis, you can't camp here, it's only for residents. And it's my understanding that, um, we were still very, all concerned about COVID-19, so, um, that's one thing that I wanted to ask. Number two, I am not in favor of retail. It makes no sense to me to have, uh, parklets with retail. It will end up making our, our city like a flea market. I'm not in favor of that. I did hear somebody say, I, from the restaurant, if I pay all this money for the, for the, uh, parklet, I don't want, uh, it wouldn't be fair, uh, for anybody just to come in. I would defer to the, um, to the, uh, attorney to address that because it will be public property, no matter what they do to it, it will be public property. I'm not saying it will happen, but it could happen and that, they have to understand that. I also just wanna question, we seem to be doing everything at once. I mean, uh, voting on, on parklets, we don't even have the, uh, city dining program up yet. How will that, I mean, that, that could help a lot, but we don't even have that up. And while I realize that, um, restaurants haven't been in business and neither has anybody else for three months, I do get that, I do get that nobody has any money and nobody has any jobs. But when they, the, the governor does lift the restrictions on hotels and, and, and restaurants to bring them back to full capacity, which I don't think it's gonna be very long before they do that, wouldn't that fix everything? I, I really think that we're doing, uh, talking about doing a lot, spending a lot of money and the restaurants could very well be back in business with full capacity soon. So I don't understand that. So that's all I have to say.
Very good, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And last on my list is Mr. Michael Rivera. Mr. Rivera, are you with us?
Mayor and, uh, city council members in public, um, thank you. Um, first of all, whatever your decision is tonight, it better be with the forethought and the knowledge that you have a lot of businesses downtown that are suffering incredibly. Some of them are probably very close to closing. I'm gonna tell you, if you don't do this right, you're not gonna have a downtown. These people can't hang on and hope that something, that the governor is gonna do the right thing. There's been a lot of missteps, both in California and the, and the country as it relates to this. And you guys have the future of these people's businesses in your hands. And you better do this right, 'cause if you don't, you're not gonna have a downtown, like I said earlier. The city is bleeding money. This, uh, the public has no clue as to how this is gonna affect the long-term budget that City Paso Robles. The state is fifty billion dollars in debt, just in deficit. You don't think that's gonna have an effect on this city? And our only hope is to bring back and to get moving the downtown, the wine industry and the things that have made this, uh, city, uh, up until about a couple of months ago, uh, a really shining star. And I would hope that this city would have those business owners at the forefront of their mind, keeping any fees to low or insignificant or zero until we get through the other side of this. So we can start to create a business environment, again, downtown that is so vital to the future of this city. If you guys mess this up and don't do this right, you guys are the ones who are the decision makers. Listen to your business owners, listen to the entrepreneurs, listen to what they have to say. And at the end of the day, that'll be the right thing to do. If you guys bureaucratize this or create a lot of roadblocks or create a lot of problems, that's gonna be a problem. I do appreciate the fact that y'all are engaged and involved, you have this on your agenda, which is great, but you need to put pedal to metal, cut out all the nonsense, push through this and get those businesses back moving as quickly as possible. And that includes your hotel industry. I can tell you right now that, that there should be no reason why we shouldn't be inviting people back to this city based within safety and with foreknowledge that we're, we're, things are gonna change a bit until we get past, uh, this, this pandemic. And so I would just hope that you guys would do, okay, I would just hope that you got, you folks would do the right thing and keep in mind that these business owners are in a very, very difficult situation.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we have another name added to the list of speakers on this item, Jen Albin is on the line. Uh, Jen, welcome.
Good evening. Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm absolutely in favor of the parklets, I think they're a great idea and they can add a lot of ambiance to the downtown. But no less than three times tonight, somebody has mentioned the problem of people other than the restaurant diners eating, um, or using these sparklets. And the thing I want to remind everybody of, including the, um, the restaurants, is that this is public property. You're, you're putting-
Is the status of promoting tourism in Paso Robles right now?
Yeah, all paid spending of promoting, um, tourism stopped, um, back in March when shelter in place went in order by the state. Um, just a couple of other facts, we are currently still, um, supporting only essential workers are to be traveling. And our county has also put in place a fifty percent occupancy order that is also being implemented. So, um, to be very clear, there is no outward bound promotion of tourism happening, um, from travel passos.
Thank you. So would it be your, uh, contention then that the, if the parklet program, at least for now, if not in the future, would be to accommodate local diners?
Absolutely. So we, um, we think it's a great opportunity, um, for promotion of a locals campaign. And we define locals as those within San Luis Obispo County, which is the same definition that the county has had in place during this whole time.
Very good, thank you. Don't go away, we may have other questions.
Sure.
Right question of, uh, city staff, I believe, the last caller asked how the issue of public access to these parklets would be enforced. Um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping I'm understanding the comment correctly. I believe the concern was that if someone comes in and uses a parklet and doesn't eat at the restaurant, is there gonna be a problem? Is the city gonna get involved in enforcement? How's that gonna work? Any, any ideas on that?
Yeah, let me give you a couple of little points on this, 'cause that did come up, a number of speakers raised the issue of public use. So clearly, these are in the public's right of way. Um, but the property owner is going to, or the restaurant's going to basi- basically be furnishing them. Um, so ideally, I think really how it works is the tables and chairs are gonna belong to the restaurant. Um, if those tables and chairs aren't being used the way the restaurant wants, um, they clearly can, can, can take those tables and chairs back out of the parklet when they see fit. Um, but in terms of somebody just occupying that space, I think, you know, legally, the public can occupy the space like anyone else. Um, I think in general, this is no different than the sidewalk cafes that we currently have all over the downtown. And honestly, there hasn't been this issue there and the same potential actually exists in those cafes as it does in the parklet. So I think it's something that you can speculate and talk a lot about. I think honestly, it's probably not going to be a big problem based on the issues that we've had with the, the cafe areas. Um, but we can definitely work with the city attorney and make sure that the language is clear in the agreement about how this issue would be handled, when and if it ever came up.
Okay, does staff, ha- cat, did the staff capture any other questions that I missed?
Well, I think we heard from a number of the speakers about the, uh, limit on the total number of parklets. Um, you know, previously there wasn't a limit, um, based on some of the concerns with parking, staff had suggested a limit of five, but that's really an arbitrary number. Um, the council's got full discretion to set that number at any number or not even have a limit on it. So I think that's something that a number of the speakers, um, brought up. There was a question about, um, written comments and why those weren't in the staff report. Um, we did receive a number of additional comments, those were released to the city council today as an addendum, so that, that addendum was published and given to the city council. It's also available on the website. So Ms. Reynolds', um, comments as well as John Reynolds' comments are in that addendum. Um, I know that is true. Um, and I think those were the primary, uh, comments that I had, um, recorded.
Very good, thank you. Let's go to council discussion comments, uh, Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, I've got a lot of them, uh, here to start out with. Um, Warren, I guess a question with regard to a parklet meaning three parking spaces would be taken, is that essentially what we're saying?
That's what we expect based on the width of most storefrontages, that they would probably be eligible to convert at least three. There may be some that could ask for four.
Well, that's, that's my point. I think, uh, I'm gonna go through some of the things that I'm in favor of. First off, I, I'll just say basically, you know, the last time we spoke about this, uh, subject, we really wanted to exploit the park and put you more tables out there. Technically, all these restaurants are within a block or two from the park, which they can certainly use that space. So i- in the beginning, I was not in favor of these parklets. Having heard testimony and the survey of eleven hundred people with eighty percent of that voice of approval, I'm willing to explore this for sure, no question. But to me, we gotta make it equitable for the people, uh, that actually own these spaces and that's the citizens of Paso Robles. Um, you know, to confirm additional parking, for me, is gonna be, uh, critical for me to support this. If we have additional parking that is, uh, realized during this period that the public can use, um, then that's a, a big check off for me that they can, need to do that. I think, in my opinion, that if we're going to allow this to happen, uh, we need to charge the two thousand dollars. However, I think it should be exclusive, somehow we can write language that this is exclusive to that restaurant owner who has to pay the fee, uh, in lieu of, so to speak, a parking. And I think we could also arrange such that, that that would not be an onus burden for the restaurant. In other words, if we grant this, uh, for one year, at least for no more than one year at this point, that we can split that fee into quarters. In other words, five hundred dollars a quarter, which certainly would not be a, a heavy burden for the restaurant to do that. In effect, adding personal distancing space, that's what this is all about. We've gotta have more distancing, uh, to allow more people downtown to, to enjoy the downtown. So to me, it's worth something to the restaurants to pay, uh, like an in lieu parking fee, so to speak, during this interim time and, but also that they should have some sort of rights, exclusive right to using that space too. I mean, it's, I, I, I know that we're gonna have, legally, we're gonna have to figure some sort of language out that we can, um, make that happen. So those are some of the things that I've been jotting down, uh, through the testimony that I'm hearing tonight. Certainly, we want to support any kind of business that, uh, is needing recovery help, uh, no question about that. How we do that and how we equitably do that for everybody concerned. In other words, the people who own the property that we're gonna be putting these on need to be involved as well. And so for me, Mr. Mayor, those were my first few comments, I'll listen to other councils.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Councilman Strong?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna be of your other extent to also. I think one of the, I, I'm in full agreement that we, we, we need this for our downtown. Now, I'm concerned and I know, I understand Councilman Hammond's, uh, concerns, I'm concerned about the fact that, you know, we're six, we're what, over half a million dollars in debt in creating the parking program that we've already created, that now we're going to be somewhat really impacting. We're projecting in, in a later item today that, uh, we may be, uh, actually losing another hundred thousand plus on parking if it is fully utilized. And we're not gonna fully utilize it if we do this. So that's a concern. But the other thing that really concerns me is they'd be fair and equitable and the concerns that other people have brought up that this is public property. And there's a lot of factors here and I think we have to take all of them in consideration or, or we're gonna make mistakes. And for a change, I really agree with Mr. Rivera on, on a lot of this, we need to do this right. We all think, I think we all know and we have damn demonstrated to us, especially in the last few days, that public policy is driven by events. And it's, I don't wanna see any events occur locally that creates a situation that we can't deal with. So if a person gets some takeout food and goes to a table to eat it and that owner isn't where he got the food and he says, "You can't sit there," that's bad enough, but what if that person is also a minority? Now, what's the perception that's gonna be, take place? So if we're gonna do this and we're gonna have this exclusive, number one, there has to be some kind of a rentalist, as Councilman Hammond has said, even if it's deferred for now. And I, I can't see, uh, waiving fees for ninety days but having a permit for a year unless there, unless it's unlimited permitting. In other words, we're not gonna put any numbers on this, anybody who wants the permit can have it. But if we have anybody who wants the permit can have it, now we have an additional problem and that's the loss of parking spaces. The only thing I can see that might compensate for that, nothing is gonna compensate for our loss of revenue, except we are gonna get increased revenue from the sales of these businesses because we're gonna get some sales tax revenue. Not a whole lot, but at least a little bit. I think we're gonna need some kind of a free shuttle bus that, number one, is going to bring any tourists that- tourists that do come eventually, or our citizens, if they park outside of the area, free to the downtown area so that they can use these facilities. And they have to be well-publicized, and it has to have a frequency. And perhaps we have to instruct this so that the restaurants that are going to be, get the benefit from this will help pay for it, or possibly pay for the whole thing. I think we bought two shuttle buses recently, and we're not utilizing them right now. We'd have to have somebody pay for the maintenance, an upkeep of them, provide a driver for them, and provide the operating expenses. But I think that's a possibility. Street closures, I'm still not in favor of it. Sacramento tried it some years ago, created an entire downtown mall, and those good businesses died within a year. And they pulled them all out and opened up the streets again. I know that this is something being looked at because of the current situation, but I'm sorry, I still don't like that idea. So I think it should be probably for the customer, their customers only, if they are renting that space and the public is getting the rent. And that should be part of that permit fee. It should include some type of a nominal rent, possibly paid monthly or quarterly or something over a period of time. I could also see a deferral on that for 90 days or even up to six months, so that they can recoup the cost of creating the parklet itself, the equipment and, and the flooring, et cetera. But I think we have to do this right. And I, I don't want to see us do it unfairly, inequitably, or create a situation that could be construed as prejudice. And those are my concerns before we get to making any motions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I totally agree. We need to get something started. I have driven by downtown park, and I can see that we have additional tables. And I can see that people are taking their chairs and enjoying that. I'm so glad that's working out. I kind of had a question on the stakeholder meetings. If anybody's been talking about maybe using up the alleys instead of closing down street parks, the streets, maybe lighting up some alleys that way. If, I am concerned, as Mr. Hammond, about the parking. I did hear them say that we're going to have some extra parking, and I saw the letters come in from some of the businesses. But I think we're definitely going to have to put some, there's going to have to be some kind of signage to let people know where they can park. I really am optimistic that we can all work together and get something done. It all sounds positive. I agree with the defer the payment, but we, I think we still need to charge something quarterly. But I know that they're going to have to come up with some money upfront for construction. And I do think that we should have more than five parklets. Those are my concerns, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So after we discussed this at our last meeting, the very next day, because for me, there were a lot of unanswered questions. And as I said at the top of this meeting, the last meeting was very late, and unanswered questions get to be confusing at that hour. But anyway, after hearing the presentation at the last meeting, I did go and contact the mayor of Long Beach. They have a very successful parklet program. Took a long time to consider it and put it in place. It was not done overnight. It was not done in a hurry. They have a great amount of materials as far as design, as far as rules and regulations. So I wanted to get a feel and a flavor for how other cities were doing this. And I checked several other cities in a similar fashion. And I also went to NatCo to get their information about parklets. So I tried to educate myself as much as possible on parklets. I put together a list of about 15 questions that I felt were not answered at our previous meeting. I met with staff. I got most of them answered, so I'm feeling better about that. Feeling better about a lot of things that have been said tonight. There are a couple of points that I think need to be made, and I apologize to the folks that think that, you know, we just need to grab the bull by the horns. I've done that a couple of times, and if you don't avoid the horns, it gets real unpleasant. So I need to, I need to talk about these points. On the parking issue, I think this is, for me, the biggest development since our last discussion, because parking is at a premium and because we've had such heated discussions about parking in our downtown over the last year. But the effort to increase the parking supply by utilizing these private lots, I think, is laudable. I think that's great, and it really helps ease my mind. The one little technicality that I would, I would toss out there to the people that are organizing this is, things change. And unlike the city, unlike government, when things happen in the private sector, there's usually not a public hearing. So if a couple of months from now, somebody who offered parking spaces decided, no, they had a better use for it, that could complicate the matter. So I'm just tossing that out there so people realize that that's a potential liability, and there needs to be considerations made for that. I'm still, I still want to nail down, and whatever we do going forward, I want to nail down the issue of liability, because we've dealt in liability with many other situations. And the issue of who's providing the liability, is it the tenant, is the owner? Because there's difference in recourse if we ever have to take that route between somebody that's giving liabilities indemnification as a tenant and as someone who actually owns the property. I want to make sure that's spelled out very clearly. A question that I also have is the question of transferability. If I am a restaurant owner and I sell my business, well, obviously, I can't sell the parklet because I don't own it. But at the same time, it's been operated as part of my business. Does that mean that the new owner is required to take over the responsibility for the parklet? How is that going to work? On the issue of fees, I think, you know, I've been told so many times over the years that government needs to operate more like a business. And I've made a lot of excuses for why it usually doesn't. And there are some good reasons that it doesn't. But in the era of this pandemic, when it is affecting all of our revenues, I think the city very much has to be smart and has to operate like a business. I think the fees have to be paid. I don't mind them being deferred. I don't mind them being paid quarterly. But I don't think it's something that we can afford in the face of the budget considerations we're going to be making in the days and weeks to come. We can't be deferring a lot of fees. It's just not going to be financially smart for the city or its citizens. I think the last thing on my list is, I really believe that there's going to be some, what would I say? There are going to be some differences of opinion between businesses downtown over time. It just happens. We're human, you know, it just happens. And I don't want the city to be, to wind up getting in the middle of merchant feuds. People, you know, concerned about who gets to use the parklet, who doesn't get to use the parklet. You ate in a hamburger here, you should have eaten it there. I would like to see if we go forward with this, if at least one, if not all of the organizations that have brought this forward, take on the services of ombudsman for settling downtown disputes. If merchants have differences of opinion about these parklets, I think they should have a business solution to it. And that's not something the city should be wasting its time and staff on trying to resolve. So on, those are the issues that are important to me. Again, much more comfortable this time around than I was the first time around. I think we still have some questions to answer. But I don't want to sacrifice the good for the sake of the perfect. I think if we move forward, probably template is probably a good idea, if we can get a good design, so that we can, if nothing else, we can standardize the price of this. Because, you know, with different designs, the price could be all over the map. And it would be good to be able to say, this is the program, here's, here's what it costs to build a parklet, here's, here's how you get involved in the process. So those are my thoughts. And let's get back up to the top of the list. Mr. Hammond, anything else occur to you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was thinking that, you know, my, I want to do is, as far as the four of us buy off on some directions to council, I think what we should be doing here is if we're going to be in agreement to do this, we need to have some of our points said, and they come back with a final resolution that kind of reflects what happened tonight. I think the first off, we might want to all agree on or not, is, you know, having this set up for a one-year interim park program. In other words, we're only going to allow this for 12 months. Maybe put some language in there where in about 10 months, we're going to revisit it to make sure that we still need to do this. Obviously, the reason we're doing this is to help the restaurants with their sales. In other words, get more personal distancing where they can drive more sales. If, at that point, they're not needing that anymore, then again, it would sunset. So I think the first agreement we all ought to think about is, do we want to do this parka program? If yes, then, number two, is it for restaurants only? I don't really agree that retail needs to do this. They already have the sidewalks that we could do the sidewalk cafe kind of thing with them if they needed to do that. But I think at this point, restaurants only was, is really who are trying to drive the people down to help the downtown district. So maybe ought to go around and circle on that one real quick, make sure everybody's on board or not.
Okay. What else you have on your list?
Three parking spaces. In other words, the park that is basically designed by staff to have three parking spaces taken. For that amount of space, I'm saying we need to hold that permit fee of $2,000. Again, it being payable over quarterly, not to be such a hit, but basically, you said it, that our city budget and our staff is going to be hitting some major red, red tape here pretty quick. So these fees are going to help our staff as well with all this extra that they're having to do. This is something that wasn't really in their palette of work to do, but we're having to deal with it. So, but spreading over the cost, I think is certainly doable for restaurants to, to, to help. Confirm parking. Again, this is a big one for me, that if we're going to do this, these people who are going to buy the, or lease, I would say, probably a better way of saying it, the parklet area need to prove and show that they have additional agreements with private parking. In other words, that people coming downtown are still going to find a place to park. Okay? That, that is huge for me. And then the last thing, again, maybe craft an exclusive agreement somehow with our counsel, legal counsel, that the people that are putting this money out should be having some sort of a right, just like the sidewalk cafes do, that they can use that space for their exclusive restaurant work. So those are the main points that I'm really trying to say, that I think we need to get into some sort of a resolution.
And if I'm. So let me, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
I say if we can craft something like that in a resolution and have staff bring it back, I'm, I'm for it. I, again, originally, I was not really into this too much. But again, with the, the fact that we see, you know, all the surveys saying that, you know, 80% really would like to see something happen like that, I, that's what we're here for. We need to react to the public. So, you know, those are my main points. And how we can take it from there, please move forward.
Right. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to read these back, and then we'll go around the council, and then council members can weigh in yea or nay on each one of them. And then if they have something additional that they want to add to the list, we can do that. And then we can come back for a motion. And I'm just presuming that if the council wants to entertain this program, it would be a motion to allow it contingent upon those points. Does that make sense?
Exactly right.
Let me read this back. And John, you tell me if I got it right. The first question is, do we want to proceed with a program such as the parklet program? The contingencies would be a one-year program, progress revisited in 10 months. That this would be restricted to restaurants only. That the $2,000 encroachment fee would be payable to the city, although it could be deferred on a quarterly payment. That there would be contingent upon confirming additional parking spaces, and that we would consult with the city attorney to form some sort of exclusive encroachment agreement, so the restaurants that are putting out the money to produce the parklet would have the exclusive use of the parklet. I get that right?
You got it right on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So let's take this down, let's take this down the road and see what the other council members think. If they want to, if they want to say yes or no on those points, they want to add points, we can go along with that. Councilman Strong, what are your thoughts?
Okay. Well, I, I, I basically, I'm in agreement, but here's some changes. He mentioned a $2,000 fee. I said that should be a $2,000 annual fee with 1,000 be the, the permit, and 1,000 be the rent for using public space. And then it should be 1,000 per year with a one-year extension allowed. So it could be for two years. That's so that they can somehow recoup their initial costs. I don't think one year is going to be sufficient, not, not at the current use, to actually recoup those costs. But that's my opinion. On the parking, we have a situation with the mid-state fair, that they are not going to have a fair this year. And they're in deep trouble. They're looking for help from the state to go out of business. Hopefully, maybe we could either, through some means, either the businesses downtown, or whoever could rent their parking lot, or get permission to use that parking lot with some kind of arrangement, and we could use that as a shuttle bus stop. And I think a shuttle bus may be part of the answer on the parking. Now, along that line, let's see, there was another aspect to this. What was the one? Name the second item.
One-year program revisit progress in 10 months.
Okay, the next one.
Restaurants only.
No. Restaurants and any, and beverage. Food or beverage establishments. So the wine tasting, the wine tasting rooms could have some space also.
Okay.
All right. Somebody is food and drink.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go along with that. And other than that, yeah, we, we're going to have to have some kind of insurance indemnity. And it better be good insurance. Those are my main, main points.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, sir. I heard everything. I got it all written down. I agree on everything. But I also wanted to see what the other council members think about the template we didn't talk about. Are we going to leave it open? Or we're going to make it unified, uniformed, or eclectic? Or we, I think we need to put some kind of wording in there also.
Okay. What would be your, what would be your preference? Would you like to see templated parklets? Or would you like to see individually designed parklets?
I would like it all uniformed for, for it all to match the way our downtown is.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all for me, sir.
Okay. Very good.
Question, Mr. Mayor, question, Mr. Mayor, for Warren, while you're starting thinking. Warren, this would not have to go to planning commission, would it? I mean, we could just make a direction on parklets and the standard of a parklet and take it from there?
Yeah, the recommendation is that you're authorizing city staff, which is a city engineer to approve them. So that would be the only approval is city engineer.
Right. Okay. Yeah, that's, that's the thing about.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a question on that, too.
Well, hang on a sec. John, finish your thought.
Well, I was just going to say to our city engineer, David Athie, what I was also going to mention, I didn't get into, that this fee for the parklet would include three spaces of our parking, diagonal parking. However, it could be that a restaurant might want to do two parklets. In other words, we need to, I, I want to be careful about this because, you know, in certain parts of our downtown, there are a lot of restaurants. And I could conceivably see that the whole parking on that side of the block would be taken out. Not to say that's bad or good, but the point is, I think David Athie would have to figure something out where, you know, if we're going to do this, and there's like one or two parking spaces in the middle of this whole block that's left over, you see what I'm saying? I'm not sure how David would handle that.
Any gentleman?
Mayor, if I could, just interject.
Yes, please.
This is David Athie, city engineer. So we would work, to answer that question, we would work closely with the fire department on that issue. You know, one of the things that, that the fire chief has indicated is that, during that, there would be wall-to-wall parklets along a street. We would review that real closely. We would want to make sure that there is adequate space between parklets for fire engine access, also for fire hydrant access along. So as, so as these, these permits come in, we would make sure that we'd have enough space, firefighting capability, and also parking. So that, that would be our standard.
Yeah, we, we might want to just take a minute, David, to draft. Yeah, we we might want to just take a minute, David, to draft the downtown where parklets could happen. In other words, um you know, proposed areas for parklets and see if they fit with a particular restaurant that's close to them or not. You follow? Instead of just just putting them haphazard across the block.
I I understand what you're saying. Um and we can certainly look at that. Also, you had mentioned about not necessarily taking up three parking spaces. It is possible to put, to have a single or even a double parking space parklet uh in the diagonal area. Actually, have three spaces, but.
Okay, John. How did you?
Yes? Hello? Hello?
Did you get the info?
Yeah, I got, I got most of Da- David, but it was pretty good. Hello?
O- okay. Fred, you-
Yeah, I I was concerned about the uni- uniformity issue that Maria brought up. If you have a wine tasting room that has these, one of these, it's not going to be quite the same as a restaurant type thing. The same thing is different restaurants feature different styles of food. I would think that maybe our planning department might have a number of compatible uh designs that we would allow, not just one for the whole downtown. Because the whole downtown isn't that uniform. It's got some variety, just some standards.
So here's what I would like to try to do is the place to start. And it follows with what I said before. Uh I'm going to try to put as much as I can of your thoughts into a motion. Uh some of the, some of the points I don't agree with, and that may cause it not to pass, but that's okay. It's a place to start. So this is the motion I would propose, that the city council of Passerobles allow for the development of parklets in the downtown area. Uh I'm I'm sorry, in the city of Passerobles. It would be a one-year pilot, it would be a one-year pilot program revisited in 10 months. It would be limited to restaurant and beverage establishments only. The encroachment fees would be payable to the city, although they could be billed quarterly. And Fred, I'm going to disagree with you on the annual fee because when we went through the the sidewalk um encroachments before on the restaurants, we had a long discussion on that. And the council at that time decided that the additional benefit of the of the use of the space was sufficient to uh warrant public benefit. So I'm not going to ask for an annual fee on that. Uh also contingent upon confirmation of additional parking, and that'll be up to the people who've already started that process to make sure that we have those agreements in place. Uh and uh contingent upon um a template design for the downtown, which was the suggestion by Councilwoman Garcia, and a contingent also upon a legal language that says that the business that is paying for the development of the parklet would have exclusive use of that parklet. And something that was not put in uh the discussion previously, but I think has to be called out is the fact that since this is a one-year pilot program, we're going to start off with five parklets, first come, first served. And if it's working well, we can always expand that. And that would be my motion. And would there be a second to it?
Uh Hammond would second that.
Okay, I have a motion by the mayor, second by Councilman Hammond. Discussion, Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
One one thing on that, I would like you to have that fee be a a permit and use fee. And the reason for that is that if they have paid a use fee, they have the right to tell people, you can't sit there. And the public is getting a specific benefit. The thing is, if they don't have a use fee, then it's still public property. And now you have a problem.
Okay. Other colleagues?
Uh I would say legal counsel would probably want to weigh in on that, obviously, but that sounds logical, you know?
Yeah.
I'm happy to do so if you would like. So I I think you can, as the mayor noted, you, there are times where we have, we allow use of public property without a fee if there's sufficient public benefit to offset that. So there's different ways of looking at it, but you could certainly call the encroachment fee a use fee and a permit fee to take away any concern that there might be about what the payment is for, that it's not just for a permit, but for the use of that area uh to help facilitate the exclusive use and the restaurant enforcement of that.
Thank you. Any other questions at council? Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you all for the discussion. Thank everyone for uh the work they've done in preparing for this and staff and also the people that took their time to make public comment tonight. Could someone please alert Mr. Gregory that he can rejoin the room?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Please.
Um I just want to make sure that I understood this right. We have no numerical limitation, correct?
Yeah, we did. Five, five is the pilot program.
Five?
While Mr. Gregory is five, what's the motion?
I would ask that my vote be changed to no.
Would you like to make a motion to reconsider?
Motion passes three. Still.
Okay, sorry.
Do we, we need a motion to reconsider? Can we just change the vote?
No, you can change the vote. I wasn't sure if you was asking for a motion to reconsider.
Very good. Motion passes three to one. I have a request, Chair, by staff and take a break. So I'd like to take a break for about 10 minutes. So let's all take a deep breath. We'll be back then.
Gregory's here.
Uh Steve, the council just took a 10-minute break once they learned you were coming back.
Hey Cindy, just checking to see if you can hear me. Cindy, can you hear me on the phone on the call-in studio? Thank you.
Hey Dave, we need to make sure we introduce Cindy next time.
Will do. I'll be sure to send Sarah the information. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're ready to resume?
Hammond checking in. Strong's here.
Maria's here.
Gregory's here.
This action is permissible under government code section 20516. Currently two tier, uh currently tier two and three miscellaneous employees and all tiers of safety employees contribute additional, an additional three or six percent towards CalPERS under this cost-sharing provision. Earlier this year, council approved agreements with each of its labor groups that provide for tier one miscellaneous employees and tier one and two safety employees to contribute an additional 2% toward retirement contract costs effective June 28th, 2020, or as soon as administratively possible thereafter. The labor contracts for POA, IFF, and safety management also call for additional future cost-sharing changes over the course of the three-year agreements. Implementing cost-sharing provisions requires an amendment to the city's retirement contract following specific steps and timelines as required by CalPERS and the government code. The first step of the contract change is adoption of a resolution giving notice of its intention to approve an amendment to the contract and outlining each of the proposed changes. If approved, the resolution along certifications that confirm the city's compliance with the government code in respect to contract changes will be sent to CalPERS. Tonight, we are also introducing for our first reading the ordinance to implement the change to the city's retirement contract. The city is then required to hold a secret ballot election for affected members in the SEIU, the Unrepresented Confidential Professional Management Group, and the Unrepresented Part-Time Group. This election will be held from June 4 through June 19. Once complete, the results will be certified and sent to Calpers. We will then return on the July 9 council meeting for the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. This will authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the Calpers retirement contract. The amendment will be effective 30 days later on August 8, and affected employees will begin paying the additional 2% cost share starting with the pay period beginning August 9. One goal during recent labor negotiations was for all members within a particular labor group to pay the same amount toward retirement costs, regardless of which tier they were in, to ensure parity among employees. Upon completion of this and all upcoming contract amendments scheduled to occur through June 2022, the city will have met this goal. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions of staff, Mr. Hammond?
Not at, not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Strong?
Not at this time, thank you.
Ms. Garcia?
No, sir.
Mr. Gregory?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, we open for public comment. I see no one in queue for public comment online. Close public comment, bring it back to the council. I assume that we need two separate actions on this.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to go ahead and approve resolution, Attention Number 20 XXX to amend the city Calpers contract as authorized by Government Code Section 20516.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 16, Public Hearing for the Annual Oh, sorry, I mean, second, second.
There you go, Mr. Mayor. Introduced for first reading by title only and wave further reading of ordinance to amend the Calpers contract for the city's tier one miscellaneous members and tier one and tier two police safety and fire safety members.
Second by Gregory.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Now we move on to Item 16, Public Hearing for the Annual Levy of Landscape and Lighting Maintenance, District Number 1, and Drainage Maintenance District 2008-1 for fiscal year 2020-2021. Staff report, please.
Ms. Mayor, members of the council, Frida Berman, Maintenance Superintendent. This public hearing considers the levy of assessments in the Landscape and Lighting District and Drainage Maintenance District for fiscal year 2020-2021. The Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District and Drainage Maintenance District assessments are developed for each subarea based on an estimate of the cost to maintain the associated improvements within the maximum assessment revenues permitted. The engineers' reports outline the budgets and assessments for each of the designated zones and subareas. These reports have been made available for public inspection, including on the city website. Approximately $1,773,000 will be assessed in fiscal year 2020-21 to fund the cost of maintaining over 4,100 lots organized into 19 zones and 135 subareas in the Landscape and Lighting District. Next slide, please. 33% of property owners will be assessed an annual increase of less than $5. 39% between $5 and $14.99. 13% between $15 and $24.99. And 15 dollar, 15% between $25 and $29.99 per year. In all cases where an increase is proposed, monies will be applied to the operation and maintenance of applicable neighborhood improvements, including streetlights, hardscapes, detention basins, parkways, median islands, open space and slopes, and most significantly, increased water and power costs. Approximately $371 will be assessed to maintain the Drainage Maintenance District adjacent to Ashwood Place in fiscal year 2020-2021. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Stacy Reynolds from Wildan Financial Services. The city's assessment engineer is also on the line, I believe, and available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Council, questions of staff, Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Frida, it might be good to explain a little bit. If you look at that slide that shows the city, most of these landscape and lighting districts are on the east side of the river. You might explain why that is. Again, essentially, that was from a conditions of approval for that development to happen, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. It, it was the method of financing the maintenance of those areas for those developments. And yes, they are on, mostly on the east side.
Right. That's, I get that question asked of me quite a lot, essentially of the west-side residents in town. But back in the day, that was the direction of council that if we're going to have new development on the east side, that they would pay their own way and not put all this extra on the original residents. So that's just a little more explanation of why we have these districts formed.
Anything else, Strong?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
No questions.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes, sir. So I'm still learning here, so I just have a question. So like Mr. Hammond was saying, this is all paid by the east side projects here. So do they get that on their, on their tax report? Or how do they pay this?
It's, it's, each assessment is individual to the neighborhood or zone, specifically subarea that they live in. So each assessment is based on what is in their particular neighborhood. No one pays for items that aren't in their particular neighborhood, and it appears on their property tax bill.
Okay, so it is on their property tax bill, and they pay it once a year?
They pay it when they pay their property taxes, yes. And generally, they get those in December.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Gregory?
Yes, Frida, is that a quick question? So the increases seem to be just utility, utility increase costs?
Correct. We didn't feel that this was the time to push increased assessments to a greater extent. We can maintain the district with the current assessments, only, you know, allowing for increased water and power. Most people will be paying less than $15 a year in additional assessments, which comes out to like $1.25 a month.
And remind me, Frida, are we, who are, who are we contracting with? Is there's a couple people doing it for us now on the?
That's, yes, sir. That's correct. We have two landscape contractors right now, Martinelli Landscaping and Katie Janney Landscaping. Those current contracts run through December of this year.
Very good. Thank you, Frida.
Very good. Let's open a public comment. I want to remind anyone who is following the meeting, if they'd like to make public comment, they can call 805-865-7276. I have one caller on the line to make public comment. Rudy Clark, are you with us?
Ah, yeah, this is Clark Rudy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty, twenty-three oh six. Yes, twenty-three oh six, ignore us, of course. And, you know, I've been an advocate of fixing sidewalks since my wife broke her foot in three places on a city sidewalk. And in our subarea here last year, our tree maintenance expense was increased by about 1,600% with the idea that the one spot, one tree that's impacting sidewalks would be taken care of. And I know this year, I see that that temporary increase of $160 per lot was carried forward with no sidewalk repair, which I understand the COVID-19 thing. But I hope this isn't, this temporary increase isn't going to continue. I wanted to bring Subarea 38 up as it has the worst sidewalks in our area. And they have only $1,000 put for all the lots together, a total of $1,000 in budget for tree maintenance. And they had a minimal amount last year. And I don't understand how they're going to repair those sidewalks for $1,000. So that's my comment. And I hope somebody takes a good look at that. And maybe we can get, maybe we can get those sidewalks repaired too. They're directly opposite at our little subarea. So, yeah, I thank you.
Thank you, sir, for calling. We appreciate it. Okay, I see no one else in the queue. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Do we have a comment on the sidewalk repair issue that was raised by?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
I've corresponded with Mr. Rudy on multiple occasions. Actually, since last year's assessment, the district has expended nearly $10,000 in his subarea on sidewalk grinding. We are now in the process of staff, not contractors, but staff attacking the worst sidewalks in that particular zone and subarea, doing the work ourselves. Excuse me. As far as his comment regarding temporary adjustments to assessments or, and only $1,000 in a particular subarea, they were never presented as temporary increases. And as I've communicated with him, these funds go into operational reserves. They're earned over a period of time. Just because you see a certain amount in the engineers' report doesn't mean that's the only amount we have to spend. I hope that answers his concerns.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll bring it back to council for consideration. We have four resolutions, will require four motions. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion on the first resolution, please.
Mr. Mayor, Hammond will go ahead if you like.
Please.
Okay, go ahead and approve Resolution 20 XXX, approving engineers' annual levy report for the Landscape and Lighting District Number 1 for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, like to approve Resolution 20 XXX, approving the engineers' annual levy report for the Drainage Maintenance District Number 2008-1 for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, like to approve Resolution 20 XXX, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within Landscape and Lighting District Number 1 for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Roll call.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
And Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. One to go.
Yep. Last resolution is 20 XXX, ordering the levy and collection and assessments within the Drainage District Maintenance District Number 2008-1 for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Item number 17, Adoption of Cost Index Adjustments and Amendments to the Comprehensive Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2020 and 2021. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Catherine Piotti, and I am the city's finance manager. As we do each year, this evening, I will be presenting the proposed annual updates to our comprehensive fee schedule. The fees included in the comprehensive fee schedule have been deemed to be those in which a particular individual or group is the primary beneficiary, as opposed to the public at large. As a result, it's more equitable to charge for these services rather than funding them out of general taxes. Typically, the city adjusts these fees each year to account for inflationary adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. However, in addition to CPI increases, city staff reviews all fees listed in the fee schedule, and additional amendments are being recommended to allow either for greater cost recovery, to maintain or increase the affordability of services, or to discontinue fees in response to a decrease in community need. The updates I will be presenting this evening include the annual inflationary increases, as well as amendments above and beyond what CPI allows, and the addition and discontinuation of fees within the Emergency Services Department, Police, Administrative Services, Recreation, and Library. The most significant changes are within the Emergency Services Department, which is proposing amendments to existing fees, additional new fees, and the discontinuation of fees. The proposed fee amendments for Emergency Services reflect the addition of the Fire Prevention Specialist Position-Based Fee. This was a newly created position approved by City Council on July 16 of 2019, which was approved after the fiscal year 2019-20 Comprehensive Fee Schedule was approved. Previously, some of the Emergency Services fees were based on the Fire Marshal Position-Based Fee, which is a higher hourly rate than that of the Fire Prevention Specialist. Now, some of those responsibilities have shifted from the Fire Marshal to the Fire Prevention Specialist, which in turn lowers the cost to provide certain services. The amendments also include an update to the Position-Based Fee that was previously listed as Administrative Assistant. The position has since been reclassified to Administrative Coordinator, and as such, this update is simply realigning the fees to reflect the actual positions within the department. Additionally, as part of the annual fee schedule updates in fiscal year 2017-18, council had adopted a revised fee schedule within Emergency Services that included a more detailed fire inspection fee structure that focused on 100% cost recovery for the inspection services that were being provided. Although the adopted fee structure was based on 100% cost recovery, it was determined that determined that implementation of this new structure would be undertaken in phases. So upon the adoption in two thousand seventeen, the actual fees charged were fifty percent of the adopted fees, but no less than the minimum fee of seventy three dollars. The next phase began on November first, two thousand eighteen, and the actual fees charged were at seventy five percent of the adopted fee. It was planned for the full adopted fees to be charged beginning on November first, two thousand twenty. However, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, it is important to accelerate that date in order to achieve a hundred percent cost recovery in a timelier manner. Therefore, beginning July first, two thousand twenty, the fire inspection fees will be charged at the fully adopted fee amount. As to new fees, emergency services is proposing the addition of four new fees, two of which will in turn provide a lower cost option for these types of services than what the current fee schedule actually allows. The proposed minor alarm system modification and minor hood system modification fees are lower than the existing alarm and hood system fees due to the reduced need for a third-party review. The other two new fees are being proposed in order to help achieve consistency with the California Fire Code and in response to the increasing needs within the community. These fees include a mobile food preparation vehicle annual permit and a tiered fee for the public safety radio repeater systems. Staff is also proposing the discontinuation of several fees due to the fact that they are either associated with non-active operational permits and are charged accordingly through the existing inspection program, or the service is no longer offered by emergency services. The fees being proposed for discontinuation are listed on the slide. As I mentioned before, other departments are also proposing amendments and discontinuations of fees. Within the police department, staff is proposing the addition of two position-based fees to include the hourly rate for officer and sergeant. Having an average hourly rate for these positions will help streamline reimbursement billing processes such as reimbursements for DUI-related costs. Additionally, the recreation program offers the junior lifeguard program that consists of a seven-week-long training course that culminates in an American Red Cross Junior Lifeguard certification upon completion. The Red Cross Junior Lifeguard Program will be expanded for the summer of fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one to include the development of swimming skills and endurance, victim recognition, an overview of first aid CPR and AED, and water resource skills. Due to the program expansion, staff is recommending a slight fee increase from a hundred dollars to a hundred and twenty-five in an effort to provide a greater cost recovery while still making the program affordable. Although there may be no aquatics program this summer due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, it's important to keep the fee in the fee schedule and assess its cost recovery as usual, as there may be a program next summer. Staff is also proposing the discontinuation of fee, of a fee within administrative services and a fee within the library services program. Within administrative services, staff is proposing the discontinuation of the fee relating to promissory notes or payment arrangements. The reason being that when a payment arrangement is offered, its purpose is to allow a customer to pay off an outstanding balance through a series of smaller, more affordable payments in order to keep the account in good standing. Adding a fee to an already outstanding balance is counterproductive as it increases the indebtedness of the customer. Additionally, the library has been analyzing the interlibrary loan program over the past two years as the cost of providing interlibrary loans has continued to rise, while the demand for the service has continued to decrease. As such, the last year has continued to show an increase in the cost to participate, and the utilization and need for this type of program has continued to diminish. Therefore, the library is proposing the discontinuation of the interlibrary loan program, therefore no fee is needed. Conclusion, we recommend the approval of the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty one comprehensive fee schedule, including the applicable annual inflationary adjustments, as well as the additional amendments, additions, and discontinuations of fees as presented tonight and detailed within the staff report. That concludes my presentation this evening, however, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that, we do appreciate it, we'll start off with council questions, Councilman Hammond.
Uh, nothing for Catherine, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Strong.
Nothing for me.
Councilwoman Garcia.
No, sir.
Councilman Gregory.
I'd just like to say that's a really good job of presenting it, very clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Then one question for me on the interlibrary loan fee, is that, is that, uh, is that the fee we pay for black and gold?
No, this is a different program.
Mr. Mayor, the, the black gold program is a cooperative program between our library, the county libraries, and libraries in three counties, including City Santa Barbara, City Santa Paula, and so that's a comprehensive set of services. This is just one single, um, activity, one single service that our library offers, so it is independent of black gold.
Okay, gotcha, thank you very much. Uh, we'll open to the public, I'm looking here at my little handy-dandy list, I don't see anyone online to comment, so I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for consideration, Councilman Hammond.
Uh, like to go ahead and make a resolution if you like, no discussion for.
Please.
Like approve resolution twenty triple X, adopting the annual cost index adjustments and amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty one comprehensive fee schedule.
Second by Gregory.
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye, motion passes five zero, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom, if I can make a quick comment?
Yes.
So six months ago, when we had, uh, two departures in administrative services, uh, Ryan stepped up and became the interim director, but in addition, we had Shannon become the interim HR manager, and, uh, Catherine become the interim finance manager, they both, both of them have now become regular occupiers of their positions, but I think you can see, um, from both of their presentations tonight, the quality of people we have.
Very well done.
Absolutely, thank you so much, we, we depend on that, and it's good to have that type of, uh, that type of service, we really appreciate it, thank you. Okay, item eighteen, continued direction of the proposed fiscal twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, Mr. Frugie.
Council is aware, maybe members, members of the public listening in tonight might not be fully aware, this is probably the fifth or sixth in a series of, um, presentations and discussions by the council and direction by the council, so each time you've given us additional direction and taken the budget preparation to the next level, allowed us to do more in, in the interim time, so this is the next to last scheduled presentation, the direction we get from you tonight will allow us to prepare the recommended budget for your consideration on June sixteenth, and Mr. Cornell will give you, uh, a quick overview of the material that was in his staff report, which was presented to you in quite some depth, so we wanted to give this opportunity for Mr. Cornell to give you an overview, plus give you a chance to ask any questions you may have had from reading the staff report, so Ryan, if you would proceed, please.
Yeah, yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, as Tom had already mentioned, uh, we had several budget discussions, um, ever since the onset of, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, beginning towards the end of March. Um, just to kind of recap, immediately, immediately, we implemented a hiring freeze, uh, we froze all discretionary, non-essential operating costs, um, really just to kind of help protect, uh, the general fund, um, in the near term, until we were really able to analyze and figure out what the impacts of COVID nineteen, um, is. Uh, what differs from this presentation than from previous reports is that I'm actually gonna start touching, uh, base on the enterprise funds, uh, those are the water, the sewer, the airport, the downtown parking funds. Um, we all, uh, we will also touch base on the economic development fund, uh, which is the proceeds from the Senate Bill ten ninety and the Diablo Power Plant, uh, shutdown and decommission. Um, so the, uh, the way my, my presentation is, uh, is that I'm gonna talk about those enterprise funds and the economic development fund first, uh, kind of break, uh, for council questions and comments, um, and then dig into the general fund. So beginning with the water fund, the city's water supply system includes twenty wells that pump groundwater, we have a, a Salinas River underflow supply, as well as the surface , uh, water from Lake Nasi Mano. Um, these are considered water production, and as you can see from this pie chart, uh, that represents about sixty-eight percent of the overall water fund expenses, that represents about eleven point four million dollars a year. Um, I did break out in this slide and in the staff report the Nasi Mano maintenance and operation costs, uh, just because those are su- such a significant portion of the overall water fund. Um, in addition, uh, to, uh, the water production, we have the, uh, it's about ten percent of the cost to treat the water for Nasi Mano, uh, equals about one point six million dollars a year. Um, and so the, almost eighty percent of the cost of the water fund, and is again by no surprise, is getting the water, treating it, and getting it to our residences. Uh, the other large component of the water fund is maintaining, repairing, replacing the infrastructure to get to the water to our customers, it's also known as CIP. Uh, for the, uh, twenty twenty one fiscal year, uh, this is gonna total about thirteen percent of the overall water, uh, fund expenses, or about two point two million. Um, there are three projects being recommended, um, in this, uh, upcoming fiscal year, uh, this includes, uh, a well rehab, which replaces motors, pumps, columns, oil tubes, and the like, uh, the estimated cost for that is about, uh, just under three hundred thousand dollars for the year. Um, the second project we have on the list is the annual pipeline replacements, uh, specifically in the next fiscal year, we're looking at, uh, replacing the pipes around the airport area, uh, to kind of correspond with the, uh, road repaving work that's going on out there. Uh, the cost of that pipeline replacement is about one point one million. And lastly, the, uh, last project is the, uh, water tank coating at the Golden Hill Reservoir, uh, this is a really important maintenance project so that we could get every, um, uh, month, uh, year out of that thing, uh, the recoding project is gonna cost about eight hundred thousand. Really, the mo- uh, the most important, um, item that I, I think to, to note in the water fund, um, is the decline in, in fund balances or, or fund reserves, so, um, in this, in this graph here, um, the blue bars represent the revenues, the gray bars represent, uh, the expenses, um, and this blue, uh, line is the, uh, fund reserves or fund balance. As you can see, in eighteen nineteen, the revenues were well above expenses, but that's only because, uh, we issued, um, bonds for the twenty first Street Reservoir Project, um, but the majority of the project isn't occurring until, uh, this fiscal year nineteen twenty. Um, so as you can see, in seventeen eighteen, we had, um, approximately, uh, just under nine million dollars worth of reserves, and it's declined to, uh, about four million dollars, uh, projected at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty one. Uh, the city last completed a comprehensive evaluation of the water rates, um, in October of two thousand fifteen. Um, as a result of that study, water rates were established, um, that combined both fixed charges and consumption charges, so those rates first started, uh, on January one, twenty seventeen, um, and each year, on each January one, the rates increased for five years, so the last, uh, increase for water rates, um, is set for January twenty twenty one. So I, I just wanna, uh, reiterate that, you know, rate studies are important because it does serve as a blueprint, um, for revenue and expenditure forecasts, um, you know, ensures that our current rates are able to meet current operational needs, um, it's important that we meet our debt obligations and our debt service coverage ratios, and really making sure that the fund's protected and we have adequate reserves, uh, for the kind of those unexpected items that, that do come up in, 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 in time. Um, so because of all of this, in the upcoming year, I, I, I think it is necessary to conduct, uh, both a capital mass, uh, capital project master plan, um, and a rate study, um, this has both been similar to what we did in, uh, the sewer fund, uh, the past two fiscal Um, onto the sewer fund, the city operates about a hundred and forty miles, uh, of wastewater pipeline, supported by fourteen, uh, lift stations, um, all of which gets funneled to our wastewater treatment plant, which was upgraded in two thousand sixteen, and our new tertiary treatment facilities, that is, the treatment of, of wastewater to recycled water, uh, was completed in January two thousand nineteen. Um, so as you can see from the slide, uh, fifty-nine percent of this cost, sewer cost is related to collecting the wastewater and treating this, the, um, the wastewater. Uh, thirty-nine percent is, uh, related to infrastructure repair, maintenance, and replacements of those systems. Uh, total CIP comprises of five projects totaling, uh, five, four point five million. Um, excuse me, uh, they are listed in more detail in the staff report, but they include manhole replacements, uh, lift station piping replacements, um, upsizing certain mains, um, in the Commerce Scott Flagway area, um, and then just the general pipeline replacements and other equipment items, uh, used at the treatment, um, plant. Uh, similar to the water fund, the sewer fund reserves have also been declining, declining over the past several years, uh, beginning with nine million in seventeen eighteen, down to, uh, just a million and a half projected for twenty twenty one. Uh, now, in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the sewer fund did conduct a master plan, uh, which was accepted by city council in October two thousand nineteen, so since October of two thousand nineteen, uh, staff has been working with the consultant to update the wastewater rate and the, in its rate study. So this rate study is even more important, not only because the need to build reserve levels, uh, but because now that the, uh, tertiary treatment plant facilities is oper- operational, and the upgrades to just do overall wastewater treatment plant, uh, we are required to maintain certain debt, uh, revenue ratios, so, uh, we are well underway on this, um, like I said, on the rate study, and we expect that to be completed, um, by fall of this year. The airport fund is, uh, for the most part, business as usual, the majority of the revenues that, um, it receives, uh, comes from, uh, the leasing of aircraft hangars. The expenditures include, uh, one airport manager, and previously, a half-time maintenance worker, uh, that split, uh, their time between the parks division and airport operations. Uh, the city has been notified by Caltrans Aviation that the airport is understaffed in the maintenance area, uh, because of the fu- because the fund can support this, uh, staff is recommending adding a half T, uh, a half full-time equivalent, uh, to the airport operations so that there's one dedicated, uh, maintenance staff, uh, person at the airport. Uh, this increases cost, uh, by just under fifty thousand. Uh, there are two recommended CIP projects for the upcoming year, uh, one is adding funds to an existing project, uh, which is called the ramp resurfacing, uh, this removes and replaces sections of concrete near the parking apron. And then secondly, the other project is a million dollar upgrade to the airfield lighting fixtures and wiring. Uh, this project does qualify for an FAA, FAA grant, um, so the grant will fund ninety percent of the project and the airport fund the remaining ten percent. Um, in, moving on to the, uh, downtown parking fund, in, in May of, uh, two thousand nineteen, uh, the city established a parking program and implemented paid-in-time parking in the downtown area. Um, since then, and as you're aware, the parking signage have been installed, uh, we have a vehicle recognition equipment, um, and the car software and part, uh, pay stations, all that have been purchased, and really is, is part of that, um, shown as the startup capital items of about four hundred thousand dollars there. Uh, it is the intention of the downtown parking program to be funded solely based on parking revenues and fines, and not have a fiscal impact to the city's general fund. However, when the program was established, it, it was estimated to take approximately two to three years for the program to be fully operational and start receiving the maximum revenues. Um, as such, and because there's significant startup costs, an interfund loan from the general fund was made to cover any initial revenue shortfalls, uh, repayment to the general fund would be made at the end of each fiscal year, whenever there are net revenues being generated from the downtown parking fund. It is anticipated, as proposed, that the general fund loan balance will increase to six hundred and twenty-four thousand, uh, by June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The proposed budget includes one full-time community services officer, twenty-three thousand for operating supplies and services, and a hundred thousand dollar placeholder for continued consultant services. and a hundred thousand dollar placeholder for continued consultant services. Again, these figures and as Mr. Strong had mentioned earlier, these figures do assume that the program will be fully operational by July one. And no reductions or changes in the program anticipated. So with that being said, if there are any changes to the program, the hours, the durations, the number of parking spots that are going to be generating revenues, this will impact the numbers that I have shown here. The Economic Vitality Fund was funded by one-time SB ten ninety funds allocated to Passer Robles for economic development activity in preparation for the decommission of Diablo Canyon and the projected economic impacts on the region. Over the past three years, these funds have supported contracts with the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services. This three-year contract with the chamber will end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. An option currently being analyzed is bringing the economic function in-house. And as a city employee, the annual cost will remain roughly the same and with sufficient SB ten ninety funds available to fund a full-time economic development manager. Regardless of whether the city continues to contract the chamber or not, unless other funds such as grant funding can be reduced to offset ongoing costs, the general fund contributions will be necessary beginning in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Given the significant economic impacts that COVID nineteen has had already and likely will have on Passer Robles, economic development efforts is a critical piece. So just to recap what I've said so far, you know, for the most part, no major changes to the enterprise funds. The water fund is in need of a master plan for capital projects and a rate study. The sewer fund rate study is near completion and we expect to see those results later on in this, in this year. For the airport fund, the staff is recommending additional half FTE, so there's one full-time maintenance worker at the airport. On the downtown parking, we want to make sure that we reestablish the program no later than July one. And then lastly, as I just mentioned, the bringing the economic development functions in-house. So, Mr. Mayor, I think now is a good opportunity to ask questions from other council members, provide comments. And then afterward, I'll dive into the general fund.
Very good. Thank you. Council question? Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, back on the parking situation there, Ryan, I calculated basically, you know, with the two thousand dollar fee, over a period of a year, one space would generate about fifty-five dollars of revenue for the city. I'm just curious, you know, what our parking revenue was projected per space and how that relates. In other words, what's the delta difference? It seems like we may be making money, so to speak, on the parklets. I'm not sure. But that's what I'm kind of curious. Has anybody crunched those numbers on that at all yet?
I haven't personally crunched any of the numbers to see where we're at on, on the comparators with what we're expecting versus what's actually happening. I do know, I mean, what I do know, when I kind of presented earlier is right, it does take two to three years to really kind of get the full benefits of the program. So the numbers that are projected for fiscal year twenty twenty-one are still lower than what we would imagine the program being once it's fully operational and maximizing revenues.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I just, it's an interesting thing now that we're talking parklets that this is actually going to be like an in-lu fee, but then again, it's actually going to be generating revenue, which essentially would go back, I think, into the parking structures, you know, that we're doing here. But, you know, that's why I was kind of for it as far as causing the fee to be charged to the people that want to do this. Because again, the public, the people who own the space essentially is getting some revenue from that lost space. But anyway, such an interesting slide, bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
No, no, I think it was a very good presentation, very realistic as of today. Fortunately, we're still in the crack shoot. They don't know whether the dice are going to come up seven or snake eyes, so let's wait and see.
Councilmember Garcia?
No, sir, nothing from me.
Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Ryan, can you bring up the slide for the water fund where you're showing the declining revenues? So my question is, so it looks like we're kind of taking a bigger hit in two nineteen, two twenty. Is that because of the construction of the water tank?
Yes, correct. So the revenues here show the bottom proceeds, which we actually show as money coming into the fund being received in eighteen nineteen and then the actual construction of the facilities here in nineteen twenty.
So you got the money in eighteen nineteen, which spending in twenty. And then I also noticed that it looks like the revenues are closing in on expenses in twenty twenty-one. Is, what's the reason for that? Can you explain that?
I think that's good. I think what we're seeing in twenty twenty-one, a combination of things. We are still being very conscientious on reducing our discretionary spending. And so we really didn't expand expenditures in twenty twenty-one. But in this, the normal inquiry, I mean, rates are increased in every January one. So we are seeing, you know, slight revenue increase even with the same amount of consumption. So you are correct that this fiscal year and with the capital projects that we have listed, you know, being minimal, we are pretty close to breaking even this one year.
And then my other question about that is, as we have more customers coming online, we should be increasing in the blue, right?
Absolutely. And as well, as well as connection fee revenues too that are.
The connection one, the connection revenue is going to the revenue column, right? So the connection revenue and the operating revenue both support the revenue section.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, it is really important to do the rate studies because the rate studies do look at a ten-year horizon so that we can really see actual results come in, overlay them on that ten-year horizon or the forecast period. And really just to make sure that our, you know, we're keeping up with what we had, you know, thought we were today.
It's a very encouraging sign. I had, can you bring up the same slide for the sewer fund, please? So we did a really good job on building the new sewer wastewater treatment plant. And I'm seeing an enormous, continued enormous decline. And is that because of the CIP cost of the recycled water and the completion of the plant? Or why are we seeing such a large decline?
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is exactly accurate. It's the tertiary treatment facilities that we, you know, that started in seventeen eighteen and then really ramped up and completed in eighteen nineteen. So now that those facilities are completed, the capital projects costs have declined significantly. But with that being said, I guess the next major cost that, and we're not sure where this cost is going to land, if it's going to be in the water fund, the sewer fund or a new recycled water fund. But the next major cost is getting that distribution system to the east side of town so that we can transport that recycled water to, again, the east side of town.
And if I might add, Councilmember Gregory, this is not a surprise to us. We knew, we knew a few years back when we started building the treatment plant and started building tertiary treatment that we were going to draw down the reserve. And so we did the master plan and we're doing the rate study now because we knew we were going to do this. But at the time, it was not the right time to try to do a sewer rate increase.
So I guess a good question for Dick on this one. So continuing on after twenty twenty-one, how do you see the revenues turning around? Just by a rate increase or by actual money coming in from revenues or how's that going to change?
So the rate increase and of course, like you would do also, we'll try to make it as easy and stuff on customers as we can. We'll also have new houses being built that'll be paying sewer bills and connection fees and things like that. So there'll be buy-in, the connection fees are buy-in plus growth. So they'll be buying in their share of the treatment plant and things like that to help on the debt payments as well as having new customers to help pay for pipeline replacements and pay for treatment costs. So, but we knew, we knew this was going to be about the lowest spot for this fund.
Financial health, what do you, I'm sure the recycled water is going to have to be out of water fund. Just guessing. Okay. I think that answers my question. Thank you very much, Ryan. I like, very good presentation. Thanks.
Very good. Shall we continue on to the second part now?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so like I said earlier, the, you know, we've had several discussions leading up tonight. As it stands today, the general fund baseline cost, that meaning the existing service levels offered to our community today, along with the needed CIP and adequate replacement level, stands at a total cost of fifty-three point one million dollars. Now, majority of these costs are related to personnel since people, it is people that provide the service to the community. But as we kind of mentioned in the January council workshop, we are still, you know, right around thirty-four FTE people sure in order to provide really the adequate service levels that our community is seeking. So those forty positions are not included in the fifty-three point one. So, but, you know, we do start with, okay, if we were to fund the programs that they are today, that's our, that's our kind of our starting point. Analyzing revenues, that's the, you know, that come to the general fund, the property taxes, the sales tax, the hotel tax, the charges for services and the like, we're projecting it to be a little over forty million dollars, a forty point two million. That's approximately five point one million dollars less in revenues than what was anticipated back at that January council workshop. And we're anticipating that being the impact of COVID nineteen, at least that's what we're using in our, in our budgets. So, you know, preliminary estimates, and I'm still holding strong to that estimate is the revenue losses from COVID nineteen, you know, it's going to hover right around four to six million dollars. So for, for budget purposes, we split the baby and we assumed a five point one dollar, a million dollar revenue loss in nineteen twenty, or twenty twenty-one. Based on the direction that we received at the last city council meeting and maintaining reserve balances at thirty percent allows the city to utilize about five point seven million dollars worth of reserves in the upcoming budget to try to balance the budget. However, by even using five point seven million dollars worth of reserves, we still have a reductions in the expenses that we need to make up that difference of about seven point one million. So over the last couple of weeks, we've, we've, you know, staff has looked at different buckets of expenses, seen areas where we can further reduce. And we, in the staff report, we provided three different scenarios. But in every single one of the scenarios, we were looking at these eleven items that are low priority and that can be removed from the budget in any sort of situation. So the first one being that because of COVID nineteen and because we don't know when the state phases of reopening are going to happen and, you know, and we needed to, you know, hire lifeguards, we are planning on eliminating the twenty twenty aquatics program for the summer. By doing that, you know, not only does it save on the personnel, the lifeguards and the staff at the program, but it also saves on maintenance costs at the pools and the heating costs and the like. So we're estimating that, you know, to be conservatively speaking, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that can be reduced out of the budget. That being said, there is still some monies left over in the aquatics program. And that's mostly to address the one, you know, four to six weeks program for twenty twenty-one that kind of crosses over to the next fiscal year. The second item that we wanted to reduce is kind of across-the-board vacancy savings. We, as I mentioned before, we've already implemented a hiring freeze and we have about eleven general fund positions that are currently budgeted but vacant. Even if we were given the go-ahead to begin recruitment on July one, there's still a significant amount of time to do the whole recruitment process. We're thinking it's in the neighborhood of six to ten weeks, generally speaking. The police officers are even longer because of the education and further background requirements. So we, again, this is a conservative number that, you know, no matter what direction we go, we feel pretty confident that we're going to see salary savings no less than two hundred thousand dollars. I mentioned this in the last meeting as well, the citywide contingency. We added this line item to the budget the last two-year cycle. And it really represents the unexpected or unknown costs that come up throughout the year that we didn't know when we adopted the budget. And so this kind of just allows the city manager to go ahead and enter in some of those agreements. The most recent example was an engineering traffic study at Flamston School, which is still within the city manager's purchasing authority, but at least we had a pocket or a bucket of money that we could draw from. And, you know, because we didn't realize that a traffic study was going to be needed. Rather than eliminating that contingency completely, we are recommending reducing it in half to down to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the year. The fourth item is the Section one fifteen trust contribution. Again, this is just a prepaid discretionary payment to help pay down the UAL. The fifth item is a reduction in the community partner contributions. Again, this is a target in, to try to meet, we still have, again, it's not eliminating the contributions, it's reducing those. Similarly, we're looking to reduce city attorney services fees in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. The seventh item on the list is the reclassification of the city clerk position. With the last election, the city clerk is no longer in elected position, but rather on appointed position. And so seeing savings for no longer having to pay a city clerk is going to be shown. But at the same time, we also need to do some reclassification so that the, the job description matches the roles and responsibilities of the, of the new city clerk. So it's pretty much close to a net zero, but I think we, we think it will save about five thousand dollars a year. The eighth item on this list is the reduction of staff training and succession planning. Over the last two to three years, we've been really aggressive setting our employees for further leadership training and education so that as our aging population start to retire, the next group of generation is ready to take over their spots. Again, we're requesting or we're recommending reducing this line item from forty thousand down to twenty thousand. The next item is the reclassification of a senior accountant position in the administrative services department. This kind of falls back in line with how it was previously. And it does kind of help with parity within the department. So reducing that from a management position down to a coordinator position would save about twenty thousand. The tenth item there is the reduction in the emergency preparedness training. Again, we know that it's important to continue to learn and train in EOC operations. However, similar to the, you know, item in number eight, this is an area that we are just reducing, not eliminating, so that we can help kind of balance the budget. The last item that is taken out of all the scenarios of the low priority CIP projects, those are the, these are the eight low priority CIP projects. They total three point seven, three point eight million. The majority of that cost savings comes from the first one up there on the homeless shelter or homeless forming shelter project. Surprisingly, or, you know, even if we were to add that back in, we know the two point six million is actually under budgeted. And the cost for, for building a warm and shelter is much, much higher than that. Okay, so with that all being said, here is our different scenarios. So each one of the first blue bars is what I just mentioned to you. These are items one through eleven. They make up, right, just. They make up right just over five point one million of the overall seven point one reductions needed. In scenario one, as you can see, it's more CIP heavy, that's the gray bars. So we would be eliminating the median priority CIPs in scenarios one and two. And then in scenario one, it's the replacement funds that make up the rest of the difference that, that we need in order to balance the budget. Moving over from scenario three, as you can see, we're keeping the median priority CIPs in, we're keeping the replacement funding at a hundred percent, and really we're, we're targeting the personnel and the operating costs to make up the difference. Scenario two is kind of the, what we tried to do is try to blend one and three together to kind of have a, you know, middle-of-the-road approach.
So Ryan, it might be helpful, might be helpful to give the council a little bit of the philosophy behind the three scenarios. So scenario one is the optimistic scenario. It's saying that as bad as the pandemic and its economic and fiscal implications have been so far, there is hope that we can come out of this relatively quickly and have the economy rebound, of course with help, but have the economy rebound. And therefore, since the impact of the pandemic is going to be relatively short-term and in the near term, instead of cutting programs, instead of other hits to the services we offer the community, we would defer expenses, defer programs, so that instead of doing those now, we would do those in the future when the economy bounces back. So that's the optimistic scenario. Scenario three is the pessimistic scenario. It's saying that at the moment, there's no clear indication that the economy is going to rebound, even businesses that are reopened haven't seen a lot of customers, we may get hit with a second wave, the vaccine may not come as quickly as Dr. Fauci hopes it will, and so we need to be very careful. And that's really what it's saying is we need to cut costs now instead of just deferring because this may last a while, and we don't want to defer certain things that would increase the overall cost by making them later. And so in this scenario, as Ryan said, instead of emphasis on deferral, it's actually pulling in our wings, reducing the costs that the city is incurring on an ongoing basis by imposing cuts on some of the lower priority programs that we offer. Clearly, all the programs we offer are valued by the community, and we believe the community needs them, but when we can only do so much, we can only do so much. And then as Ryan indicated, scenario two is the middle ground. Now, that doesn't mean you are restricted to three scenarios. And it also gives you the ability, thanks to the interactive model that Ryan has, for you to propose changes to any one of the three of these, or a fourth scenario. But what we tried to do is give you these as starting points, and then allow you not only to adjust them as you saw fit, but then finally decide in which scenario, as you have amended it, that you want us to come back to you with on June sixteenth and propose as the recommended budget.
Thank you, Tom. And then, you know, just to, just to add too, I know the bars don't really detail what exactly we're reducing to make up these differences, but on page nine and ten of the staff report, or page three hundred and twenty-six or three hundred and twenty-seven on the agenda packet, there is a table there that really does outline each of the individual steps and which buckets each one of the scenarios is, is reducing in order to balance the budget. Now, because the blue bars here, the, the items shown in items one through eleven really do kind of, you know, include replacement funding and include personnel, we kind of wanted to break it down in different view where, so this was the, the baseline expenses, this makes up the fifty-three plus million dollar expenses, and these are the kind of the different buckets that we're reducing in order to balance the budget. So in scenario one, as you can see, and as Tom had mentioned, you know, it's on one fact, you know, end of the spectrum where it will be short-term and short-lived, there's not a whole lot of decline in personnel, but rather there's, the big hits are coming from capital projects, and it's coming from replacement funding here. Scenario two increases the CIP, but it still has, or decreases the CIP, but it still has, you know, very minimal impacts to personnel overall. And then the last scenario has the most impacts to personnel and the least impacts to CIP. Again, these are shown in table form in the, in the staff report for your review. So for the most part, that's where we wanted the discussions to kind of help us present the, the final package for, for June sixteenth when we adopt the budget. And so I'll, I'll switch back to the slides when we start having council comments, but that is the goal for, for budget, you know, is to get direction so that we have a kind of a final product for council presentation on June sixteenth. And then after that, you know, I feel like I've had budget discussions with council, you know, for every meeting, but I think we're going to go a little dormant for, for the month of July. So I, you won't have budget presentations until we do a fourth quarter review of nineteen twenty. We're looking at the first meeting of August on, on that one. And I think that, that reportedly interesting because we'll, we'll have some final figures, and we'll really see where ending reserve balances fell for nineteen twenty, because right, the more reserves that we have in nineteen twenty, the more flexibility we have going into twenty twenty-one. But as we kind of already mentioned too, in the previous reports, we are planning on doing major quarterly updates for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the first one being the second meeting in October there. So with that all being said, again, we, we'd like to get direction on, on what scenario or, or like, like Mr. Fruchy had said, what combination of scenario one, two, and three we want to move forward with for budget adoption on June sixteenth. Mr. Mayor, that's my, the end of my presentation, so again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that information. We have a couple of people waiting for public comment. A reminder to folks that want to comment, eight zero five, eight six five, seven two seven six is the call. We'll do a round of council questions here before we go to public comments, starting with Councilman Hammond.
Mr. Mayor, no, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Same.
To Councilwoman Garcia?
None from me, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
There's always a spoiler. Sorry, I've got some questions. Ryan, could you go back to your very first slide where you're showing that one? That's, well, that's a good one, right there. So on the very first slide, you're showing us where we have to use a portion of our reserves and we have to reduce our costs. So what happens in eight to twenty-one, twenty-two? Are you going to, are we forecasting that we're going to have enough return of our revenues not to have to use our reserves anymore and keep our costs down a little bit? Or what's your forecast on that?
So, I mean, one of the reasons why we changed the budget from a two-year to a one-year was because we, we simply do not know. It is, it is too early, which has impactful and sudden COVID-19 has had on the economic side of things. We just, we don't, we don't know. And I don't want to throw assumptions or forecasts out there because we're still waiting on information to come in just from March and April time. So with that being said, I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm hopeful that, that the revenue projections that we're seeing in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one are more on the conservative side, so maybe we won't need as much reserves, but I can't make that determination at this time.
And realistically, if things don't change rapidly, we could be looking and dipping into reserves again for the following annual budget.
Correct. And, and, and part of, and, you know, we, part of the strategy that city's having is starting the communications with the employee groups now, so that, you know, if you write, if things are taking longer to recover or get worse than what we're anticipating, we're going to be able to have that flexibility to adjust our, our costs accordingly.
Okay. And then this is kind of a question for you and for Tom, and I just have one more here. If by some, I don't want to say act of God, but that's what I'm going to call it, we actually get money from the federal government, how does that affect this scenario?
So it's, it's twofold. So one way to look at it is we get revenues from the federal government, and we don't have to use as much reserves as we anticipated. Or the other option that council could have is adding back costs that we reduced in order to balance the budget to utilize those revenues in that, in that method. So in, in any scenario or in the forecast for revenues for twenty twenty-one, we don't assume any sort of federal or state funding to help with the revenue loss, even though I know that there's some legislation that's out there that potentially could get received, but you know, we don't usually put those in the, in the model until we know for sure we're going to get some sort of revenues.
So Mr. Gregory, whether additional revenues come from the feds or the state, or it's just that the economy bounces back faster than we thought, that's why we've given you the budget in decision packets in priority base so that every time revenues increase greater than we anticipated, we actually know what's the next thing we want to come back to and recommend, recommend refunding because it'd be the last thing we cut.
And then, I'm sorry, just once, just an operation question after we get our public comment. How are we going to have this discussion with the rest of the council and the rest of the budget here with all these items? Have you got a way to structure that, Tom, or an idea?
We do, and Sarah had just texted me with what I think is a very good suggestion. Ryan can put up a screen share that shows you the table he was referring to, and so you can actually, with, at the mayor's direction, go through item by item and decide, first you can decide which scenario you want to start with, and then you can go through item by item and say which ones you want to keep, which ones you want to delete, and through the interactive model, Ryan can tell you the impact of those so you know to still at the end come up with seven point one million dollars of savings.
Okay, so I'll withhold any other questions until I have the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of people waiting for public comment. First step on the line, Dale Guston. Dale, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Dale Guston, nine forty-five.
Good evening.
Did you get that?
Yes, Dale, if you could speak just a little louder, we can hear you, but just barely.
Can't hear him.
Okay, is that better?
Not a whole lot.
No, it's not, no.
Well, that's because I'm on my cell phone, and that's the best I can do.
That's better.
They, they cut me off of the land phone, so I had to reconnect on the cell phone. And can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you, Dale.
Okay.
Dale, yes and no. You keep fading. Get closer.
I'm as close as I can get.
We can hear you. We can hear you, Dale. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to commend the police department for their job today. They did a great job. But unfortunately, Mayor Martin and Gregory and the police chief was not getting their gift to dissipate until a long-time friend of mine came along after giving me a hug. I, she happens to be black skin, and she asked the group to go into prayer, and she gave the most powerful prayer I've ever heard somebody give, and immediately after that prayer, the group disappeared. And I owe her a big thank you for that, as does the city. So anyway, the, that was not going to be my comment on general comment. But anyway, on this item, I, for three years, I kept telling the school board that they couldn't go into this deficit spending all the time and depleting their reserves. Well, as you know, Mr. Compton is right for you guys to build up a large reserve, but the, looking at this depletion that you're headed into, it started before COVID-19. It started when you put in that parking, paid parking, and it, and it killed a lot of businesses. And, and this is the first time I've seen the figures on the, not all the figures, but some of the figures on the paid parking. And you really need to scrap that program. You're never going to pay back that million dollars to get the loan to the parking fund, never. You're not even going to, I predict you're not even going to meet the expenses ever with the revenue that you're going to get. People, it's a day town downtown Monday through Friday, even before COVID-19. So I, I don't like to tell people I told you so. I, I refrain from doing that with the school board, but I don't know if I can do it with you guys, because you're just killing too many businesses with that parking thing. And I told Duly Dixon that, and I told the mayor that, and I told the entire council that. It is the worst boondoggle, the worst boondoggle you ever got into was looking to Duly Dixon on paid parking. Paid parking, what a word? Yes. And the pay, and the employee parking was working, but this paid parking is killing the businesses during the week. And if you put it into the weekend, it'll kill them on the weekend. Have a good day, gentlemen. I think I got in like twenty minutes.
Thank you. Next up in line, we have Joe Peterson. Joe, are you with us?
I am. Thanks for having me, guys. It seems like I speak to you guys every, every Tuesday at the eleven o'clock hour, so glad to be here. Mr. Mayor and Councilman.
Please look forward to it.
These are challenging times we're in, and I can certainly identify with the tough decisions you guys have, have had a view in regards to the budget. We are in similar conditions at the Passerables School Board, as Dale Guston alluded to. We have similar challenges with the budget shortfall, so budget shortfall, and we're going to be going through the same sobering budget process ourselves. I do want to quickly touch upon a quick specific in this item. In item five, under an agenda, item eighteen, which suggests the reduction of the general fund to community partners, tune to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This proposal leaves about seventy-eight thousand dollars remaining to allocate across three community partner organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Ministries Association, and the association I work for, which is the Passerables One Country Alliance. That represents a sixty-five percent cut to the community organizations, pretty, pretty large. While we can understand the need for the city to reduce these expenditures and trim the budget in light of the COVID-19's economic impact, we want to remind the council that the current shortfalls are related to the reduction during tourism due to the virus, and that tourism is substantially influenced by the visitors to our wine region. The alliance is the principal marketing organization for the wine, Passerables One Country, and it will be incumbent upon us to reach our tourists and bring them back to the area the second half of this year, if, if it's safe. The depression in hotel stays, even though they are now allowed to open up to fifty percent capacity, is directly related to the closure of tasting rooms and related businesses here in Passerables, dictated by COVID restrictions. As our wine region opens up safely and tasting rooms are again available for tourists to enjoy, which we believe is very soon, we will need to effectively market and see rebound in the tourist dollars coming to our area. We will need the funds to draw them back and thereby improving the city's budget outlook. So in conclusion, we understand there are cuts to be made in this budget. Let's be thoughtful in how we do them, not take actions that will hurt us, hurt us in recovery. Certainly know that the, the massive cuts have to be made, but I wouldn't call this a low priority in terms of just scope of what we're talking about in terms of bringing folks back to Passerables, because those tourist dollars certainly, as you guys know better than anyone, help our city coffers. So again, have a good evening. I just want to, I'm sure we'll talk to you guys at the next budget meeting as well. I just wanted to give you my two cents right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else in line. We're going to close public comment on this item, bring it back to the council. Do you want to go over the process we're going to go through here?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Cornell, if you wouldn't mind bringing up- Mr. Cornell, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the table on pages nine and 10 of the staff report, please.
So it is in a little different format, but it has the same information here.
And this allows you to do the interactive?
Doing that on a different spreadsheet.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, because the median priority CIPs are at the top, it may make sense just to go from top to bottom and do either a straw vote or a first pass or maybe one council member wants to make a motion as to which scenario to focus on. Any one of those ways should allow you to relatively easily decide what amendments you want to make to give us the direction we need.
So I'm thinking the first discussion we should have is if they're focusing in general on the scenarios. So we're not skipping from scenario to scenario. And then we can go line by line and and take the individual council members' input, if that's all right. So Councilman Hammond, let's start with you. What's your thoughts about prioritizing on these scenarios? Which one are you drawn to?
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I definitely, in my opinion, you know, due to the unknown severity of the COVID recession, I'm going to call it. You know, I prefer a very conservative budget, you know, because we don't know really what is going to happen. So going into our budget, I would like to say we should set up with number three, which is the most conservative. I even did scenario X1 and X2 for myself, and I got it down way further than that. But it comes down to the point where how much service are we going to cut? That's really what it comes down to, just like a family that needs to live within its means, so do we. You know, at this point, the public is expecting services, and I think we need to focus on the basics, you know, police, fire, sewer, water. Those are the main ones. And then from there, let's start talking about what we can do. But at this point, I would tend to lean towards scenario three, at least going in for the first quarter. I guess the first three months of our next budget, starting July 1. I would hope that we could revisit this on a quarterly basis to adjust or even sooner. As we see revenue being generated or not, I mean, it's a back and forth situation. We need to be flexible, and I think at this point, though, starting out, I would lean to number three.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Strong, your preference?
My preference, obviously, is scenario two. It's almost the same as scenario three, except it doesn't kick any of the children out of the house. And I think if we're going to be a family, we don't kick any of the children out of the house. So I go for scenario two.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia?
I'm also with scenario two, sir. But there are other changes I'd like to make, but I'm more with scenario two.
Very good. Councilman Gregory?
I'm going to also, I like scenario two as well. And the primary reason for that is scenario three, there's a reduction in some police staff, which I don't want to see happen. And I think that it takes a nice even look at whatever we can reduce in staffing. And there is one question I had that maybe Tom can answer. It's a $500,000 one that may go away. And I think, Tom, you were talking about something with fiber optics, so we could not have to take that $500,000 out of the fiber optics?
Yes, sir, and Ryan has already accounted for that. So we have, we are in the process renegotiating the draft agreement with Digital West so that the city does not need to put in an initial investment of $500,000 to achieve almost the same benefits.
So should we remove that from the line item then?
So Councilmember Gregory, it was part of the low priority capital improvement projects listed as item number two, $500,000. So it's included in the $3.7 million, $3.8 million mark that's already been removed from the budgets in all scenarios.
Okay, sounds good. All right, that's my choice, scenario two. Thank you.
Okay. Also, I certainly understand John's point of view, and I'm tempted to go very scenario two. So let's start again with Mr. Hammond. And John, do you have any revisions that you would see in the totals in scenario two?
Well, again, I am thinking three, but two, if you guys want to begin that down that road. I think this is always going to be a situation where we're, you know, pointing the budget at a certain point. But I think we need to also be flexible, guys. If we don't see our revenues generated and we start not making our numbers, we need to be flexible enough to start jumping back to maybe a scenario three situation. You understand what I'm saying? It's again, I think the big key thing is live within our means, but yet we don't know what our means are going to be. So it's a shot in the dark, but it's an educated one with, you know, Ryan and his numbers. But, you know, I could go with number two. It basically shows it shows that we're going to be getting into our reserves a little more than 30%. But, you know, it's okay. Again, I think that's what it's for, is a pedal there between 20% and 30% reserves. That's our buffer that we're going to have to work with.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in and make sure everybody understands, all three scenarios, Ryan, if you could go down to the bottom.
I totally agree with you, John.
As you see, all three scenarios have essentially the same savings. So all three of them get us to approximately $7.1 million in savings necessary to balance the budget and retain the 30% minimum reserves.
But the point that John makes is one that we've talked about before, and I think it goes without saying. We're going to be watching revenues and expenses like hawks, and if it doesn't perform the way we expect, we need to pivot immediately. We're not going to let this go, you know, off the cliff. So I understand John's position there. So, John, looking at scenario two now, since I'm kind of focusing on, do you have any changes there that you would suggest what's in that column?
No, as Tom just mentioned, that they all get it to 7.1, and that's the goal here at this point. I would tend to again favor and concentrate on our essential services, police, fire, sewer, and water. You know, those are critical for me, and as we saw tonight, you know, with the demonstrations, our police need to be there. And same way, you know, with our fire, when we have illness and other disasters. So at this point, I'm confident that, you know, if we go with the, start off with number two, but that we have that mindset that if we don't see revenues being generated, that we can pivot, is a good word. But we need to be flexible in this budget for sure this year.
It goes without saying for me. Okay, thanks, John. Councilman Strong, your thoughts on scenario two?
Actually, I like this pretty well, and I think this does give us that ability because we don't know what's going to happen. One of the things I was concerned with was the current situation that we're going with through right now nationally, and we went through this afternoon here. And I asked, I tried to ask this question earlier, didn't really get an answer, I'm not sure there is an answer, as to where our costs are if all of a sudden we have to do a lot of police work outside of our community or pay other people to come in in order to quell riots. That could be a huge hit. But if we don't do that, I'm going to get up to a little higher on this chart, and I can't do it myself, so I have to have you move it. And that is parking lot improvements, for one thing. Do we have to do that much in parking lot improvements, or can we cut that a little bit possibly? And the other thing is in our replacement funds. I can see diminishing those a little bit more, hopefully being able to replace them in a future year.
So Mr. Strong, just to ensure you understand, that $590,000 for the downtown parking lot improvements is basically in scenario one and two, we're saying we're not going to spend any of that money on those improvements.
Oh, those are cuts, okay. Very good. All right. And I think maybe we could even cut our number 13 down a little bit more, more towards scenario one.
Okay, Councilman Garcia?
Ryan, did you take out the, I'm looking at a different report here that you sent, an email, the wayfinding and the Niblick Road signal synchronizing, was that taken out?
No, those are high priority CIPs, and so we did not reduce any of those high priority CIP projects. But that's staff recommendation. If you want to examine those and reduce those costs, then yes, we can, we can discuss that.
I'd like to get grants for some of that.
Yeah, I was thinking about the wayfinding signage, if we could hold off on that and then try to get a grant on the signal synchronization. Those are the ones I see so far for changes.
Okay. Councilman Gregory?
Somebody else is going to speak, do you want me to wait?
Well, I
I think it's your turn.
I had a quick question, real quick, about that data 911 communication system. Staff, how critical is that to do right now?
It's actually been delayed, it's overdue, and we're coming up against some fairly serious federally and state imposed deadlines.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So, go ahead. Want me to talk?
Your turn.
Okay, so
Steve, it's your turn.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll talk now. I kind of like where Maria is kind of going a little bit on the wayfinding signage, the Niblick signal synchronization. I guess we could look for funding in that or grants in that. I wanted to, I want to make sure that, you know, two is is pretty balanced. So I don't have a whole lot of changes, I think it's pretty good. I don't have anything else to add to it. Well, I'll go along with Fred, too, just on the reduction of replacement funds. I mean, we don't have to do 25 or 50%, we can make it a, you know, 35% and make it a million dollars in savings, you know. I think that's a good place just to pick up a little surplus to make us get over the hump for the total we need. That would put us at 700, 7,400,000. So that one little adjustment right there is a pretty interesting one to do.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
Not going below the 50% level, which is good. No, I think I'm good with all that, so.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm, what I'm hearing from the council under scenario two, and tell me if I'm capturing this correctly. The wayfinding signal synchronization helps of finding a grant. Councilman Strong and Gregory are in favor of reduction of replacement funds to a greater extent than shown. And for myself and for Councilman Hammond, two things are very important. We want to make sure that primary services are preserved, police, fire, sewer, and water, and that we are flexible and we are keeping a close eye on this so that if things start going south, we're going to move into scenario three pretty quickly. Have I missed anything?
Not that I heard, sir.
Okay. If that meets everyone, comes close to meeting everyone's requirements, can somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion. So
Mr. Gregory?
Here we go. So let's see, I'm going to talk, so that, just for talking purposes, in scenario number two, we'll make that even million instead of 720,000 for that line 13. Those are only comments on the grant, so we just leave those funds the way they are right now. And with the caveat that we remain flexible, like both you and Councilman Hammond said, that's my motion. Scenario two
Preserve, sewer, and water as priorities.
Fire, sewer, water, police, yep.
Very good. Is there a second?
Hammond seconds.
I will second, and seconds. Motion by Councilman Gregory, second, could we roll the call, please?
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Hi.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Mr. Fuji, does that cover the basis for you and your staff?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And we now have direction on all of the enterprises' funds plus the general fund. We can bring back a complete recommended budget to you on June 16th and 17th. I just want to remind the council and the public that's likely to be a two-night meeting, given the Gateway Project and the budget on that agenda.
Very good. Anything else before we move on to the next item?
No, sir, thank you. That was very helpful.
We move on now to item number 19, ground professionals and families. Tom, do you want to dive in on this, or Maria and I were kind of approached about this?
That'd be great if you'd like to start, since you both have personal knowledge.
Okay, I'll say what I've been contacted about. Maria, I'm sure you have something to add also. In my conversation with homeless services around the county, a question arose whether or not the city of Passerables had established safe parking for the homeless, people who are living out of their cars. I know we had discussed it previously, but we had never really made a decision. And it's, we're bringing it back for discussion right now. I'm not really sure what type of expense would be connected with that, but I'm assuming it's going to be an expense that's not going to fall under scenario two. But I won't jump to that conclusion yet. Maria, do you have a report on your conversations with people in the community about safe parking for the homeless?
Yes, sir, so I have also, I was on the same phone call with you, but Cheryl from the NWACP has also contacted me just today and yesterday wanting more information to see if we are going forward with anything. I've also had members to the public community come to my work and ask me if we are going to implement something. So I did tell them that we had spoke and we were looking into some programs. And I think if you recall, there was a lady on our phone call, her name was Lisa, I can't remember her last name. And she is working with San Luis Obispo and other cities about this same program. So maybe we can ask her what her findings or what has she come up with?
So we do have someone waiting on public comment. I'm going to ask the question, if we locate city property that we could put safe parking on, what other types of associated expenses would be necessary?
Be glad to give you just kind of a brief overview, Mr. Mayor, and answer to your question. So once the location's determined, and hopefully we can get a location rent free, then the expenses tend to be, number one, security services, because you want to ensure that the people who are parking there overnight are safe. Then in addition, most safe parking programs offer restroom facilities, cooking facilities, and shower facilities. So as you know, the county's already brought in portable showers. I think there's some in Atascadero several nights a week that are not available. That particular unit is not available for Paso. But be portable showers, and we would also recommend portable clothes washing and drying facilities if they're not already available in the facility, the buildings. the buildings that are associated with the parking area. So those are the major expense categories.
Okay. Other questions of staff, Councilman Hammond?
No, not at this time, I'm not really in favor of this too much myself, but I'm always open to, you know, study the situation if staff comes up with something to further. I, I'm just a little concerned when we open up areas like this, that when you build it, they'll come, not only our local, but maybe others from the county, and there's a certain level of uneasiness about this whole thing, for me.
That's your turn, thank you. Councilman Strong?
Well, I am in favor of it, because I, I'm especially concerned that the rent forgiveness or eviction forgiveness program ended on Monday, and there are people possibly who have lost their jobs, lost their incomes, have been only be able to stay in their homes because of that, and we may have a rising local homeless population that we're going to have to somehow address, and I think this is one of the absolutely essential ways to do so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia?
Nothing, nothing right now, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, Tom, is there an estimated cost to a portable shower, bathroom, and laundry facility?
Julie Dallin may remember the numbers, as I, I do not remember the specifics, I apologize, and I wouldn't want to mislead you, and I would need to go back to the files and get those numbers out, and I can do that and get that to the council.
I'll save my comments for later, thank you.
Good, thank you. We have one person on the line for public comment, Dale Guston, are you with us, Dale?
Yes, can you hear me this time?
We can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay, well, I have a lot of friends on Paso Care, and also I've supported Echo when you've given money to them, but this COVID-19 is definitely going to increase the number of hopeless homeless people, there's no doubt about it, and I don't know how we're going to deal with it, but maybe this might be one aspect of how to deal with it, I don't know, but finding a location and being able to make sure it meets the requirements is not easy, as has said. Also, I forgot to tell you, when I came on before, you lost your KPRL feed, the public doesn't know what's going on if they were relying on the radio, they haven't been able to hear it, ever since you had that problem with the feed to your YouTube and that. So, KPRL is not online, I don't even know if your tape is working, but anyway, I wish you luck on this. It'd be, the facts show that the majority of the people in North County that were working before COVID-19 earned less than $40,000 a year. Well, how are you going to find homes on $40,000 a year? So, that's mainly motels and wine industry people and things like that, and some restaurant people. So, anyway, good luck, I wish you well, but it's, it's not going to be easy to solve.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you. We have someone else on the line, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. I'm just wondering, perhaps I and Mr. Gregory, or I and Ms. Garcia could have a conversation with our friends at Echo and kind of pick their brain, see if there's any opportunity there. I think obviously what's critical here is we're going to have to have a place, so I'm not exactly sure how to go from here, we can, we can round up the cost pretty easily, but finding the place is the question. Any thoughts? Mr. Hammond?
No, I'll just leave it up to staff at this point, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully bring something back further discussed, more concrete.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, you're kind of cutting in and out, I think I'm next, so I just say, I think that we.
Yeah, you're up.
Yeah, I think we need an ad hoc, maybe you and Maria, I think, would make a good ad hoc on this.
Very good. Maria?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm willing to help, and I'm sure, like I said, Lisa, maybe we can talk to her also, and Cheryl, and see if we can come up with something.
Okay, Councilman Greg.
I think, I think this is a necessary item as well, I'd like to see us, it'd be nice to cooperate with Echo, if Echo does find a site for the shelter, we could use that in the interim pretty easily, so I think that's one of the real possibilities there.
I'm happy to be involved, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, and I'm just going to say, I like your choice of Maria helping you, because she's, she's really good at this.
I'm happy to be involved, but you've had the most contact with Echo, is this something be better for you to do, or do you want to go ahead and take a hold of it?
I'd be happy to chase it down with Maria, that'd be fine.
Okay, I just want to be as efficient as possible, you've had the most conversations with these folks, so.
I'll agree to that.
Thank you. Unless there's any objection, we'll have an ad hoc committee of Councilman Gregory and Councilwoman Garcia to contact Echo and try to flesh out some ideas on a potential safe parking area in Paso Robles. I think that's the only action we needed on that. Any other comment? Okay, we come now to council business and committee reports, Councilwoman Garcia?
Let's see here. I think I'm pretty exhausted, sir, so I'll, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, pretty exhausted. I had to move, I moved from one house to another this past weekend, I'm still getting settled in, so, and trying to work and trying to keep all these Zoom meetings, so I'm pretty exhausted, I'm going to pass.
We're just going to say you did lots of good stuff, okay?
Yeah, lots of good stuff.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think just to put in a word about the discussion for bringing back a senior rate for the, the trash hauling, I think that would be important, that staff can work out with Paso Robles' ways to try and get something on the books that, that'll help in that category. Also, again, a thank you note to our sister agencies and city law enforcement that helped us this afternoon, and I think that'd be in order. The only other thing I had was the Airport Commission that we had the other night, has some interesting things going on with the, the commission denying an extension of lease for the Nuno Corporation out there, which was kind of interesting to me, on why they did what they did. So, at any rate, that's essentially the main thing that happened out there on the Airport Commission from last week. Had no other meetings beyond that.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Strong?
Yes. Filling in again on, on the library meeting, library board, I got some of the stats that I was promised that finally came through today, and I think it is important for the council to know that the library is serving a tremendous purpose for our homebound people, because many of their services have just skyrocketed, and I think this is because of people's potential for mental illness in this thing. We're very constrained being pent up in our homes. So, on account, online account registration at the library for the last year, averaged per month 182, but in April of this year, it was 1,135. Their overdrive e-audiobook downloads went from an average of 1,603 up to 1,765 in, in one month, and their ebook downloads went from 1,506 as a 12-month average in April 2054. Now, hoopla is one of their specific ones, digital downloads, 12-month average, 557, April, 1,310. So, obviously, our library is providing a very important mental health service for all of our seniors. The only other thing I want to address, and I agree, we do have to look into that special discount on, on our garbage rates, but also, we need to talk to the governor about his proposed budget, when the government has given him, in, in, in their special cares COVID-19 funding, $315,224 for Paso Robles in their formula, and he's only proposing in his budget to give us $31,244. Now, that, that's over a three, that's about a, almost a $300,000 hit, and that would go a, a long way to helping balance our budget. I think we need to speak up and let the gov, the governor know that, and let the legislature know that we need to go with the federal guidelines, not what the governor's proposed in his, in his May revise. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
So, I want to start out by agreeing with the senior discount on the cash rates, I think it's a good move for us. I also want to thank Ty Lewis again for an amazing job today, great balance and leadership, and took him to prey a little bit, that ended it right there, it was great. I also want to reach out to John Pashon, who is texting Eamon Parkinson all day, sending more troops to help us, and all the other agencies, it's really nice to see the support from all of our neighbors. It's coming up, and I understood it maybe this Friday, that's pretty significant on our reopening and our successes, is they're considering removing the 50% occupancy on hotels and vacation rentals on Friday, to go back to full occupancy, and I think, I haven't heard yet, but I think you're going to see the same move in restaurants of all things, maybe next week, if we continue to produce our good results with our COVID activities. So, things are starting to move with our economy, appreciate everybody working with our businesses and supporting our local businesses, and I just want to thank Paso Robles for being the great city it is with all the people that help everybody here, that's it for me.
Mayor Martin? If I could just briefly, I was just going to tag along with Vice Mayor, Mayor Pretend Gregory's comments, we had touched base earlier, and I just wanted to clarify on the item where he recused himself, that we had moved to that fairly quickly, so I just wanted to clarify that the recusal was because, on number 14, was because of the potential conflict related to his interest in a downtown restaurant, the Odyssey Restaurant, so that was it, we just wanted to clarify.
Very good, thank you.
Can't get that right?
My activities in the last couple of weeks.
Got it right, you're good, thank you.
Thank you.
My activities over the last couple of weeks have been very Zoom-related, I met with our library volunteers on a Zoom meeting, we had a lengthy but productive housing constraints and opportunity committee, I've had Zoom meetings with our channel and counties, Levy California says, board, stakeholders Zoom, California Mayor's Coalition, our weekly elected officials COVID report from the county public health officer, the environmental, the Economic Vitality Corporation met, and if you haven't heard, the executive director, Mike Mancheck, has resigned after 15 years, so they're going to be looking for somebody else to home that assignment. Mike's done a lot of hard work over the years and been very helpful all over the counties, so I would take the opportunity to give him a call and congratulate him and thank him for all his work. I toured the cannabis outlet in Grover Beach, had a parklet Zoom meeting with all the people we talked to tonight, Chamber Travel Paso, Main Street Paso Wine Association, had a Zoom meeting with the San Luis Obispo County Mayors, the Reach Organization, formerly Hourglass, I was at the protest rally today from about 10:30 in the morning until about 1:00 PM. At one point was asked by the group to speak, and I did, I did say a few words. I was on soundoff on KPRL, I don't know whether they had technical difficulties tonight or we did, but they had some difficulties while I was on the air today, and we only did half of the show that I usually do, because the phone went dead and I couldn't get, couldn't get them back again. And last but not least, happy birthday again to Maria, hope you have a wonderful time and the 20 minutes left on your birthday. Coming up next, we have the Paso Robles Youth Commission Advisory Committee meeting, Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting is going to be Monday, June 8, 1:30 PM, Paso Robles Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting, Monday, June 8, 4:00 PM, Planning Commission Meeting, Tuesday, June 9, 6:30 PM, Library Board Meeting, Thursday, June 11, 9:00 AM. Next, City Council Regular Meeting is Tuesday, June 16, 6:30 PM, and the deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on Tuesday, June 16, is Wednesday, June 3. So, you're going to have to hurry to get that in. If there's no further business for the council to consider, I would adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong, to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Happy birthday, Maria.
Adjourn.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.